Well, it's 7:05 PM. I'm David Atkins. I'll be chairing tonight's meeting of the Westwood Planning Board. First, I'd like to ask that we rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, tonight's meeting is a little different because we don't have any applicants, but I'm going to read parts of the script here just to explain the overall process. All of our meetings are recorded by Westwood Media Center, and if there's anyone else that would like to record this meeting in the audience, please let us identify yourselves so that the audience is aware that they're being recorded. Please turn off cellphone ringers. The agenda is available at the back of the room, and the meeting will follow the order on the agenda. As I said, we don't have any applicants tonight, but I would invite people from the audience, if you want to come forward so that you're better able to hear or speak when you want to, you're welcome to sit closer. And I want to remind people in the audience, if you do speak about things, please use the microphone because the meeting is being recorded and broadcast, and it doesn't pick up your comments if you're sitting in the audience and don't have the microphone. And then when people are watching from home later, or if other people are watching it on video, they can't hear half of the conversation. So, just a reminder to please use the microphones, everybody. All comments and questions will be directed through the chair. Everyone will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. Abby, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
All right. So, I think, first of all, I would just ask people who are here if there's particular things you came here for, so that I can know to... Okay. All right. The first item on the agenda is an update and review of proposed Gay Street sidewalk design. I see you have the presentation there. Do you want to...
Right. So, I don't know... I know Dave was at the meeting on June 6th. I don't know if anyone else had a chance to watch that video. Unfortunately, Todd, the Public Works Director and the consultant, weren't able to be here tonight. They said they could come to your next meeting in August for an update, but I wanted to review this with you now, soon after the meeting. And then, the next step is Public Works will be attending the next Board of Selectmen meeting on June 23rd to give an update, so I wanted to summarize that with you. On June 6th, there was a public information session where we had TEC, that's the consultant that Public Works is working with, on the design plans. And June 6th was sort of the first public informational meeting of the design since they've started looking at the design. We call it the 30% Design Plans. There were, essentially, what they looked at in this initial study was come up with two proposals. Alternative 1 was a sidewalk on the north side of Gay Street, from High Street, all the way down, all the way down... Sorry. What is this one?
Down to Pine?
Oh, sorry. Down to... Down to Pine Lane was the alternative 1. And then, alternative 2 was to start on the north side, then cross over at Thatcher, and then, on the south side, continue to meet up with the existing sidewalk on Buckboard, or at Buckboard. So, the green here shows the alternative 1 with the sidewalk on the north side, without any crossings. Then, alternative 2 was starting on the north side, crossing at Thatcher, and then, meeting up...
With the existing?
Meeting up with the existed at Buckboard that continues here on... They had also presented two alternatives, looking at the width of the lanes, you know, 10-foot driveline versus 11-foot driveline. And then, with these two analyses, they've looked at the impacts to the stone walls, the trees, the, you know, existing fences, utility poles, and kind of listed them out. At least what they had found in their initial review, that alternative 1 had the... was recommended with a smaller lane. That's a 10-foot wide lane, and then, also, on the north side of the street was recommended with not having that crossing. And so, then, this is really still the early stages. They will be reporting to the Board of Selectmen at the July 23rd meeting, but I wanted to just review this with you, and if you have any initial feedback. The pedestrian bike safety committee, many of them were at that June 6 meeting, and then they met recently, I think maybe two weeks ago at their meeting.
The other side of that meeting.
And they had... Yes. So, Brian is now a member of the Ped Bike Committee now, and they had made a recommendation that the consultant examine the sidewalk being outside, on the other side of the stone wall.
Yeah, and the reason for that is it didn't seem clear that that's what the consulting group was going... It wasn't clear that they were going to look into that, so the pedestrian bike and safety committee said, "We definitely want you to look at that as an option, knowing that cost will come into play for that," and even logistics.
Right. And so, that was something that was brought up at the June 6 meeting. Wasn't... It hasn't... It was just kind of suggested, brought up. It hasn't been fleshed out or reviewed further yet, at this point, at the 30%, but it has come up for discussion. And I think some of the ped bike comments from that committee was that that would create a buffer between the vehicles and pedestrians walking, so it's a little bit of safety, and then, also, could save some of those existing mature trees and stone walls, so try to work the walkway around the existing features.
What's the setback of Gay Street?
The setback, or like where the right-of-way is?
Yeah.
There's...
There's a setback, isn't there? Or is it stopped right there at the stone wall?
It goes... I mean, it varies throughout, but I think most of these two proposals are pretty much mostly in the right-of-way, I believe.
So, one of the key things was that they did this initial, so the design study, and everything was under the constraint of what can we do within the town right-of-way? Because although, the idea of having a path behind stone walls has been... It's been discussed in the past and all, but it's... There's a lot of concern because it would require... It would be on people's property versus this plan, which is all within the right-of-way, within...
When you say this plan, you're talking about on the other side of the stone wall or on the street side of the stone wall?
Inside, yeah.
These, alternative A and alternative B are both done entirely within...
Within the walls.
The right-of-way, yeah.
The right-of-way. It's just that it would... The wall, some of the walls are in the right-of-way, I presume, and so, they would need to be shifted over a little better, moved around. And that's what the impacts table showed, the differences between alternative A and alternative B in terms of how much moving, you know, how much change would be involved. And so, it actually turned out that the alternative A, which is on the north side only, was less. There was less stone to move and fewer telephone poles, I think if you go to that chart.
Right down here it is, yeah.
So, this alternative 1 is the...
600 feet.
...north side. It's also the continuous pathway, so that's...
Right. I understand. It makes total sense from that perspective, but... And I like the idea of them on the other side of the wall from a safety perspective, but if they're on private property, has Town Council weighed in on this as to... I mean, putting people on a public sidewalk onto a private property, I don't know. That exposes the town. Seems like it would.
But I like the concept of it, but I just don't legally...
And if it's in the right-of-way, though, it's not going to be private property.
Well, that's why I asked.
Even if the wall is over, the easement, it's still public property.
Yes. If it was in the right-of-way, it would be the town's right-of-way, but then, if you were to go out, that would be... Could be done different ways. There's... It's been done through an easement to allow access, but it's still owners... Still on private property. Or you... Let's see, what you would call land-taking, where the land would go to the town, and then, the lot lines would change, and the private property line would shift.
Yeah. There was some discussion that in other towns, it's been done through even like a tax rebate or something. But the bottom line is, it requires a conversation with residents.
Right. And I know, early on, a lot of those residents were not jumping on board to this concept, so...
The meeting was positive, like this meeting. I went to... I've been to most of these meetings, and early on, there was definitely a lot of concern about just the aesthetics of a sidewalk on Gay Street and everything. And there was a lot of concern, people wanting a safer path to be able to walk and everything. This meeting, I think there was more of talking about how can it be done, and more focus on these alternatives, and kind of what's better and all. And then, there was some discussion that's behind the walls, which, for the residents who lived on Gay Street, that was kind of a surprise because it had not been brought up before as an idea. But it's interesting. I took a bike ride this weekend. I rode up to Walden Pond, and I was noticing, because we... I was noticing in Wellesley, Weston, Lincoln, Concord, all up there, you have great examples of path, of a pathway that's separated from the road. I didn't see it going behind stone walls, but all the way from Wellesley up, it's... There's a sidewalk, and then, there's like trees and a median strip and stuff. And it's very... It looks nice, and especially as you get into Lincoln and Concord, it really fits in with the historic character of that area. It's attractive, like the idea of instead of just, instead of a sidewalk, of like a path. So, I guess it's... There's kind of pros and cons, and so, I think the Ped Bike Committee and some people, they were like, "Well, let's explore this. Let's see, you know, can... What would it take? Like, are there places where it might be possible? If there were residents who were supportive of that, could part of it be done in that way, going behind a stone wall? There might be sections along Gay Street where it would be a good idea. It might avoid having to move the walls. It might avoid some expense. It might avoid stormwater issues, like if you put the, having a sidewalk the whole way, and you have to have the drainage and everything. There might be some options." So, that's why I think the pedestrian bike committee was wanting to see that this would be encouraged, or ask them to explore this as an option. Like, what would it take? Is it even possible?
Yeah, no. I think it's a great exploration, and I think it could be done very well. I think it's just going to come down to the private land ownership, because that's a very real obstacle we're faced with, with this project. So, I think it's great. I love the idea of the sidewalk, but I just think that's going to be one logistic to work out.
Are there other thoughts or comments, or...
Just one other question. Did they give any additional packets of information besides the slide deck? Because, Chris, the question you asked about where does ownership begin and end, that would be nice to see at this stage of the game. They just...
All I have...
It's very high-level.
Yeah. All I have is the presentation.
Okay.
I mean, it could be like, very few of the property owners on the north side happen to attend that meeting.
Exactly.
You heard positivity, you know, from everyone who lives on the south side, but they don't really matter in this situation, because we're talking about affecting the property owners on the north side of Gay Street. So, you're getting down to the real nitty-gritty of this thing, and that's... I hope they can solve the riddle, but I think that's going to be a real stumbling block, potentially.
Well, and we also met with Todd earlier this week to kind of... And it is... This is all still in flux, and it's definitely... He wants, I believe, they want to bring a complete, a solution that's really a consensus, you know, so it's not like, "Oh, well, should it be 10 feet? Should it be 11 feet?" Now, let them work out the engineering details as well, and come up with something that's, you know, that we can support, because everybody, I think, people want connections, and they want safety, and they don't want the lack of aesthetics, you know? They want it to be...
I completely agree. I think everyone is always in agreement with that until you get down to, "You're affecting my property." And those people are going to want to be heard. That's... Everyone's agreement of safety and everything until you get down to property rights. And then, you'll find some people like, "I'm... I don't want to change. I like my land as it is." So, none of those people might show up. I don't know. It may not come up. I'm just foreseeing that as the only real stumbling block. That and finances, obviously, if you can't afford to build it, then. But, again, I love the idea of not trying to... I'm not a naysayer on this. It's just, I foresee that as the real stumbling block, potential stumbling block there.
Thanks.
Not trying to hold things up, just for my thoughts.
Did you have a...
Yes, I've been to the office.
Thanks.
And could you identify your name and address for the...
Ken Foscaldo, 35 North Fork Ave. I've been to these meetings, and the plans they have out there now are totally within the town's property. And it was actually one of the landowners on the north side who suggested possibly, there's going to be a lot of stone walls that have to be moved, because they're on town property, and the town will take care of moving them onto the owner's property. And one of the owners suggested, "Have you thought of going behind the stone wall so you don't disrupt the stone walls?" And he said, "And I know already, my wife is against that idea." So, there were a lot of people from the north side of the street there, and... But everything right now is within the town's property, so that any land-taking would only happen if they got consensus for going behind stone walls.
Yeah. I think it's still something that hasn't really been fully explored yet. It's really an idea that's come up.
So, Abby, did you think, so Todd will be presenting an update to the selectmen at their July 23 meeting, and we have a pedestrian bike committee recommending support of this. I mean, is there... Should we have a...
I was thinking you should make a, you know, a recommendation or review the... I mean, otherwise, I would... Usually, the Ped Bike Committee is essentially a subcommittee of the planning board, so if they have recommendations, it goes to you first, then on to the Board of Selectmen.
So, we vote to support?
You could, or you could...
Or we do a separate endorsement?
Or you could do a new one of your own motion, if you wanted your own recommendation.
The vote that they made was to look into...
To look into.
They wanted to say, "Don't get to the next stage and not have looked into this," knowing the effort that was going into it. So, they weren't... I was at the meeting. I didn't get the... I didn't get the feeling that they were... The material, it's too raw here to make a recommendation for a 1A, 1B. It's...
Way too early.
Yeah. But I think for us, do we have any other questions for this firm before they provide the next step for us?
Yeah, I think that's the question.
The next step is what?
Well, the consultant and Public Works are going to the Board of Selectmen on July 23rd, so I think that will be an update and a chance...
Is there going to be an update, or is there going to be a...
An update in probably...
A 60%?
Oh, no. It's not going to be 60%. It's an update of where the project is as of now. So, anything that you might want to offer at this early stage? As Brian said, I think the Ped Bike Committee's recommendation was to have the consultant examine this option.
Don't leave it out.
Yeah. Don't... To look into it prior to all of a sudden, you know, further designing the options that were already presented.
Do you have any idea when they would derive an idea, locate, it's going to be behind the wall here, in front of the wall here, when they come up with that? Is that at 100%? Or is that coming up soon?
I don't know. I think it's too early to say. So, I think on July 23rd, it'll be an update and a chance for the selectmen to either give direction or, you know...
Okay.
I mean, it'll be up to the selectmen how they want to proceed, but...
How many property owners will be talking on the north side?
I think about, when I checked, maybe about 25, 25 to 30.
And this goes past the Hamlin all the way to Washington?
Yeah, it's already there.
It's already, okay.
The sidewalk is there.
It's in front of...
Pine Lane, okay.
That's a lot of people to get on the same pitch.
Yeah, it is.
So, good luck to some, please.
So, what do you want from us?
Do you want to make a recommendation as a planning board? Any initial comments from the board? Or we could just... If you don't have any, you don't have any?
Really do anything?
Okay. Then I'll forward the Ped Bike Committee's recommendation on.
Do you bring in a consultant?
To...
I think it's...
No, to have the consultant that we have examine that option. That was their recommendation, to examine the option of going behind the walls.
I think it's important at this point, when we're not... We're kind of thinking big, like we're saying, what's possible, what can, you know, what's even feasible, what's, what can be done. So, you don't want to cut anything off early, and that's the risk, I guess, is the idea that...
Understood, but we also... This is a safety issue on Gay Street that needs to be addressed, and if, like, we get too far off a scope, then we're just delaying and costing us money. You know, I think there's going to be a happy medium of both, exploring what we can, but also moving forward to take, you know, to resolve this safety issue in the town. It's been there since the dawn of time.
So, should we just forward the recommendation of the Ped Bike Committee?
Yeah. I mean, is the rest of the board okay with that?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that, to just continue exploring.
All right. And we don't really need a motion or anything.
As long as everyone consents us, we'll just forward that recommendation.
Any other comments from public or questions? Then we will move on to agenda item number two. Oh, I see. Got the... So, zoning articles for possible fall town meeting. Abby, you want to...
Right. So, now, it's that time of year, we start getting ready for fall town meetings. So, we don't yet know if there is a fall town meeting. You know, fall town meeting is something we started a few years ago, but usually, in July and August, you'll start thinking about it. If you have any articles that you want to submit, usually, the warrant, I would say probably by your September 5th. I had put together in your packet a little suggested timeline that you would need, I think, you'd want to discuss further at your August 7th meeting, and then, you would probably come to an agreement to submit any articles. You'd want to do that at your September 5th meeting, because the Board of Selectmen are meeting the week of September 10th, so that's when they'll probably close the warrant then, so they'll take in what they have and make a decision of if there will be a fall town meeting. So, town meeting's usually in November, the second Monday in November. I know it's a holiday this year, so it might be on the 13th. The exact date hasn't been set yet, if there is one. So, if you were to submit any zoning articles, or if there were any other zoning articles that came in, you would want to submit, or, let's see, at your September 5th meeting, you would agree to submit it. I would submit it the following day. You would have your public hearing on October, is the October 9th meeting would be your hearing, and then, the Finance and Warrant Commission, they hold the hearing on all warrant articles. Their schedule is October 16th, which is a Tuesday for town meeting. So, that's a schedule you're looking at. If you have any ideas for zoning changes, we can talk about them tonight, start talking about them. In your packet, I just listed a few that I know have come up, you know, kind of a lot in the past. One of them was, I don't know if you want to go over them now, or if anyone else had any other suggestions for...
Why don't we just throw them out? I have to say, I'm feeling conservative on this kind of thing in terms of, I would like to know if there's a strong need, if there's things, like how they've come up. So, the first item is split-zoned lots. Is that...
Right. So, in our zoning bylaw, we have a little section on how zoning is handled when you have one property that is... Yes. The zoning district might be split down the middle, or partially zoned, split-zoned lot. The way it's written, some people have asked if that's the way it reads. I thought it's confusing, is if it says, "The regulations apply to the less restricted district may be considered as exceeding not more than 50 feet into the portion of the lot in the more restricted district." Essentially, it's saying, if it's split-zoned, the zoning can go 50 feet into the more restrictive zone. So, for example, residential is more restrictive than commercial. So, if you had a commercial property, it could be used 50 feet over that line into the residential. So, we don't have too many of the properties, but people...
I was going to ask, how many lots do we have?
I've counted. I think we have about, I forgot about what, I think about five. We have a couple on High Street, and then, you did have that one on Nine School Street that was rezoned at the most recent town meeting, and there is a couple on, I think, where Westwood Pediatrics is on High Street.
Yeah, the parking lot.
Yeah, that's not, it's not fully zoned.
Is it all commercial abutting residential zoning, or is it...
No, it's a split lot. If the zone comes into the property, it's a split lot.
No, I get that, but the two zones we're talking about are commercial and residential, or...
What is that parking lot zone for?
Local business.
Or anywhere. I guess, any. I mean, it would apply if it was residential also, but usually, the residential's pretty good about following the lot lines. Because the way, a lot of times, the way the business districts used to be created, a lot of times, it would be from the centerline of the street, so that's why sometimes it's not all the way runs with the property line. So, there's not too many. There's a few on High Street.
So, how would you see this being clear?
I think we would change the words or to clarify that, "less restrictive," or go into, I don't know, I have to look at that wording, how that goes into...
It's kind of vague to say the one that's more restrictive.
More restrictive.
How would this be resolved in a, in an actual situation? Like, would someone go to the building inspector and then be denied, or he would decide, and then go to the ZBA and apply for a variance or something? How would it work out?
So far, when it's come up for question, we refer them to the building commissioner for his interpretation, and he...
So, would it become special permit?
No. It's not a special permit. It's really interpretation of the zoning.
So, it's five properties in the town, they give a take?
Yeah. I mean, I haven't looked at the whole, but I kind of looked at our main business districts. I didn't go through every property in town, but...
Makes sense, maybe, to make it a special permit, and that'll handle it right there?
No, I don't... I don't think that's necessary. It's more if you had something over. For example, that Nine School Street, how it used to be. You know, if you had a parking lot, instead of ending that parking lot to serve the business that, you know, the building might be in the commercial zone, but that the parking lot could be extended a little bit further and to, you know, pass that zoning line.
So, I'm just trying to think of how it would come up in a... So, building commissioner decides, "Okay, he gives the permit," and then, the resident next door is like, "Why is there a parking lot where there used to be a wood lot next to my house?"
My thought on suggesting this was just to make sure it's very clear. I mean, the building commissioner agrees that this is the way it's interpreted now, but if he weren't here, if someone else were here, we just want, I just thought, you know, make it more clear the way it's written. So, we think about it.
We're not trying to change anything. We're just trying to make the words a little easier to understand.
It hasn't really been a problem. It just came up when people have asked questions and then...
I'm fine with moving forward with what you recommend.
If you want to. I mean, I haven't looked in what language we would change it, but if you wanted to that, we can look into strengthening that language.
All right. I think that would potentially prevent some misunderstanding. The next one is two more than three cars.
Oh, that was just my number two, my second one.
More than three cars? So, currently, on a residential property, you're not allowed to have more than three cars?
Right now, the way the zoning is written, you're not allowed to have more than three cars on a residential property without getting a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. So, the way it's written, it says, "The parking, storage, and garages for more than three vehicles on a residential property." I think how it's mostly been interpreted by the building commissioner is if someone wants a garage for three or more cars, then that triggers a special permit. It's not necessarily a special permit for everyone if you have four cars in your driveway, but he's been thinking, if someone comes in with a building permit for a four-car garage, then that sends someone to the zoning board for a special permit. However...
That's how it currently is.
That's how we've been acting, that's how we've been operating. That's how we've been acting, that's how we've been operating, but it technically, the zoning bylaw says, the, did I write it? Oh, yeah. This is in the table of accessory uses where I copied here, 4332, "Private garage and/or the parking or storage area of more than three motor vehicles." And then also the size, if it was a large vehicle. This is in the, and then if you go down the table, it says, "Special permit from the zoning board of appeals." So right now, it's, so I guess my question to you is, do you see this as a problem? Do we continue this way? Or you, when I've seen this come in a lot, I think you, the first thought might be to eliminate those words, "the parking or storage", and have it only be three or more cars, garages, trigger the special permit.
Isn't it more than three?
More than three, sorry.
Not three or more?
More than three, sorry. More than three.
So what impact does this have on the resident who comes and says, "My neighbor has four cars always parked in his yard," and is that, what can you do about that?
So this is, this has come up recently, and that's why I thought of it, because someone did complain that someone was storing four, I mean, not in a garage, but had four cars, four or five cars, and had complained about that, and that it should go to the zoning board for a special permit. So the building commissioner then feels, and it should be enforced, that although it's not a garage...
This is really with a garage. Say they just want to add a second driveway. No garage, just a driveway. Is this going to trigger?
Well, right now, the way it's written, it technically, the way it is right now, if you have more than three cars, you're supposed to have a special permit.
Regardless if they're in a garage, or partially in the garage?
Yeah. Because it says, "Private garage and/or the parking or storage area."
So it seems like this change would actually make it less, if, well, it would lower the requirements. I mean, basically, it would say, that's okay, you can have four cars in your driveway.
If that's what you want to do. So the question is, if you want to, do you only want to trigger the garage being more than three cars, trigger a special permit? And then maybe you could even add language that says, that storage of five vehicles does not trigger it, or triggers screening. Actually, we do have another section in our zoning and buffer and screening that says, parking of more than five vehicles requires screening, either with the fence or landscaping. So that is in there.
But there's a fine line from, you know, a family of five, and there's four cars, five cars, because they're all out of college, or whatever, they got five cars. There's a big difference between having five active cars on the property than opposed to storing five cars.
And that's where the discretion comes into play.
Yeah. So that's where we...
The word storing is a whole different connotation.
Yeah. So that's where we, you could look at revising this language.
And it's also the accessory apartment idea, too. You know, you have an accessory apartment, and then you rent it to, and you need a person that has two cars.
Well, that does have screening requirements for accessory apartments. It says if there's going to be more than, I think, I forget, I think it might be four or more cars. That section, accessory apartments specifically has...
Well, there needs to be two, but with an accessory depart...
They have to have, provide...
They have to have two parking spots?
It says, I think it's, the zoning is parking for the occupant. Doesn't say two, it says occupant. Normally, single family would be two. So a single-family house would be two, but for accessory apartments is for the occupant.
I would think, I would think the garages would be less of an issue. Like, if you've got a big house, and you build a four-car garage, that's...
Yeah, but then you also got the three-bedroom cape, and the guy puts up the, you know, 10,000 square foot garage.
Well, so right now, it does, well, right now, it does trigger a special permit if you have more than three cars. But the way it's, but the way it's written, but the way it's written, it's saying that even without a garage, if you have more than three cars, you're supposed to be, you're supposed to have a special permit.
If you have a three-car garage, and you have a fourth car in the driveway, no one is seeing those first three cars. And it's innocuous. It doesn't offend anybody that you have a three-car garage and then a fourth car.
A fourth car in the driveway. Most houses you drive by have a car in the driveway at some point. So that's really all you're seeing. So I think asking them to go to the
ZBA, because they have a fourth car, and three of them are garaged, that seems really onerous to me, on the homeowner. I mean, they've, they've built a three-car garage, or bought a house with a three-car garage, and now they have, you know, a fourth car, because a kid got his license, and they wanted to buy him a car, or whatever. It just seems like, okay, now you have to go to the ZBA because you bought a car. It seems really, I get, you know, what Mike's saying, if the guy who builds just the huge garage next to it has a small cape, it does look different. But, I don't know, we have a lot of houses in this town with at least three-car garages. And it seems like it's very likely they're going to have four cars. But I really don't see it affecting the neighborhood adversely in that situation. Obviously, if you have three in the garage and three in the driveway, it starts to become a little different story. But I don't know what the threshold is then for the ZBA. But for me, just simply more than three seems a little, a little restrictive to go, to have to go to the ZBA as a homeowner. You buy a car, you've got to go to the ZBA. It just doesn't, doesn't...
But what you're saying is putting a condition on it, if you have a three-car garage, and you have four cars, then you don't have to come?
It, it just doesn't seem...
No, I know, I...
You've done everything you're supposed to do. You're hiding your cars from plain sight.
I hear what you're saying, but what you're recommending is adding in conditions based on...
Or changing, altering the language.
How many, how many, yeah. Or I guess my gut says...
Because I hear what you're...
If you, how many in addition to what you can garage? And I know some people turn the garage into another bedroom, or something else, another living room. But I don't know, it just, I don't know. Maybe we don't change it, because you can't come up with a definitive number right now.
Yeah. Where do you draw the line?
Yeah. But I...
What is the issue that has come up? When it has come up as an issue, what has been the issue most?
Parking in the driveway?
Recently, it came up with, I think, cars being parked and stored on a property, not in a garage. And that, I guess, I suppose is probably a neighbor wanted...
Right. Well, isn't there a bylaw also that cars on the property have to be registered?
Yes. So they...
I think that solves that problem.
Yes, but I think they were registered.
But they can be registered in...
They can be registered not on the road, but you know, there's only so much you can do. But it's not up on blocks and not registered.
But are they storing them, or was the issue, they weren't even on the driveway? They were parked somewhere on the grass?
I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know all the details, but when I looked at this section of the bylaw, it technically says, if you have more than four cars. So if you have three kids, and they all have cars, and you have a car, you're already triggering a special permit. So I thought, if, if you're okay with that, and you don't think it's an issue, we can leave it the way it's written. But if you think, my first thought was...
We leave the language, "storage and garages," and take parking out of it.
Parking and storage.
Well, it, no, if we take the parking out, it has nothing to do with the cars parked. It's with the storage and the, basically, the garage and, and the, I think that'll cover...
It says, "private garage and/or parking or storage."
Right. If we take the parking out of it.
Well, I think, we don't, what is storing? I mean, that's, I think you were right earlier, like with the, the registration requirement and all that prevents people from putting cars on the...
Well, it's on the property. I believe I could keep an unregistered car up on blocks in my garage.
Oh, yeah, I think so, yeah.
Because it's not in view of the public.
When I first looked at this, I thought you might want to take out the words "and/or", or the parking or storage area. So it would read, "private garage of more than three motor vehicles" is what triggers a special permit.
So if you're building a four-car garage, you need to go to the ZBI?
Yeah.
And we're not addressing the issue of cars in a driveway?
Then you might want to maybe add another, you could add another, maybe...
4333.
Yeah, you could add like another accessory use. It says, parking or storage of, I don't know, I'm thinking more like five. Five vehicles allowed, but needs screening, or...
But it's also like, this is the building, again, kind of back to the, it is the construction of the space. It's not the, like, whether there's actually a car there. This is your permit to have, so would this come into play if someone wanted to build a 100-foot wide driveway in front of their house that was, you know, 20 feet deep and 100 feet wide, a parking lot? That would definitely...
I think the purpose of this is to try to maintain the aesthetics in a neighborhood.
Not a doubt, yeah.
And so you, we, the way that it's written, it leaves it up to the, to the building inspector to make a discretionary decision as to what is being stored. And I'm comfortable with it.
Well, this will take it right out of his hands. Had a four-car garage, it'll automatically go to the...
No, I'm not, I'm saying, as it's stated, I'm more comfortable with it.
I would leave it as it is.
Leave it the way it is and not make any changes. Or you can keep thinking about it if you want. I mean, we have until the next meeting if you want it. I can, I can look at, you can just think about it any free time.
Yeah, actually, and if there's other examples.
How many, yeah, how many, how many special permits can...
Okay, I can look at...
I want to know, like, what, who's going to be, whose problem is it solving, too? It's the thing, I was like, oh, is it going to prevent these building, somebody putting a shed out there that's a four-car garage that they're going to fill with landscape equipment? Or, well, no, it sounds like that's already, that's covered. So, yeah, if there's compelling reason to make this change, sure, let's hear more about it.
Okay. I'll look at applications that have come in to the zoning board in the past, and then find out about the recent example. And, because the zoning board does get a fair amount of applications for the four-car garages.
They do.
Yep. But when I looked at this section, I think it was more concerning that it, it could apply to if you don't have a garage, if you just have four vehicles.
And that comes in as a singular special permit? It's not an additional item within a special permit?
Right. It's a special, it's just, you go to the zoning board for a special permit for the specific storage of the cars.
All right. The next item, non-conforming uses.
Now, this one, we had, if you remember, in 2017, I think, May 2017 town meeting, we had updated the non-conforming uses and structures section of the zoning bylaw, this 4.5. And we had really kind of created this section on non-conforming uses. What was there previously didn't really, it had a little section, but didn't say too much. But then, over the past year, working with applicants that have come in and comment, questions from the building commissioner that he's received, he suggested some strength in this language. And then I, I worked with him on some of these suggested changes that, just to clarify that, when he reviews applications, he reviews it to see if it, if it meets the bylaw, if it's something that he can review on his own through a building permit, or if it goes to the level of the zoning board of appeals with a special permit. And so his suggested changes were that he would look at all, all of these three criteria. If you have a non-conforming use, if there were, if there was an application, this was to the section of permitted alterations of non-conforming uses, that would be permitted, this is a section that has to deal with, permitted with a building permit in his discretion without the next level of special permit from the zoning board. So if it meets each of the following circumstances, and the red font, those track changes, are suggested changes to clarify that it needs to meet all three of those. There is no extension or expansion of the exterior of the structure. There's no interior expansion that would intensify the use. And the alteration is sufficiently improves the degree of compliance with building code requirements for health and safety purposes. It's to clarify that it should meet all three of those, not just one. I think that's what came up. Someone said, oh, we're doing it for one of these.
So this solves the situation where they feel like they can't improve things because it'll, they really need to improve the health and safety.
Yes. And that was one. Yeah, for like, building.
Overall intensity.
And Joe, Joe brought this up?
Yes. Joe had brought this up when he was reviewing, just over the last year of applications and questions that have come in. And then, planning staff, myself, and Nora had worked with them on some suggested language that would help strengthen that language, what we think was the original intent. That way, improvements could be designed to still conform and meet with building and fire codes without people, you know, maybe not wanting to make these changes if it triggered the review at the zoning board, that they could make it still with the building permit level.
Seems logical.
Yeah, I was fine with that.
All right. Fence height. I think we discussed fence height in the past.
Yes. So, yeah.
Corner lots, right?
I don't, so I think maybe about a year ago, I think the building commissioner had brought this up, too, about the height of fences, that right now, you're allowed to install a fence six feet or under, without a building permit. Over six feet, it's considered a structure. And then you need a permit for a structure. And then we also have another section in our bylaw that says, over six feet, but under eight feet is a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. So they have a max of eight, eight feet. And then the building commissioner had brought this up, I think about a year ago, because the building code has changed to say that structures are seven feet, are seven feet. So he has just inquiring, again, if that's something you would like to revisit. I think the last time we talked about it, you wanted to keep it at the six, at the six feet.
Is some of the standard fencing coming out now greater than six feet? I'm wondering if that's also why, or is he just, he's just trying to align structure?
I think he's trying to align the building code, and then also, if you, it's six feet from the grade. So if you have, you know, most fences are right around six feet. So if it's on top of a wall, on top of a retaining wall, or if it's built up a little bit, you know, a berm, then you're over that six feet. So you're automatically go to the zoning board. Also, I know in a couple instances, I think, I know the conservation commission, if there's, right to have it like six inches, so that critters can go underneath it. But so then we tell people, you know, do, you have to do a five-and-a-half-foot fence to leave that room. Otherwise, you have to go to the zoning board and get the special permit first. So I think, I think the building commissioner has just pointed it out as, you might want to consider it.
It's not about bigger fence sizes, it's about conforming with the codes that we have existing, without triggering a special permit.
Building code. I mean, the building code's still different than the zoning. Your zoning can be more restrictive.
Which is the critter space? Is that in the building or the zoning?
That's, conservation commission's usually recommendation, if it's near like a resource area.
I'm okay with the increase.
It's either, either you, I guess your options could be, if you want, if you want to consider a change, you would change it in that definition of structure. What I have here is I copied off the definition from the zoning bylaw, structure is six feet. Or, yeah, so I guess it would be there if you want to allow seven feet. And then another issue that has come up with, at some times, we've had, we've had applications to the zoning board of appeals, for applicants looking to, to do higher than eight feet. They can do eight feet with a special permit, but they, if they wanted to do nine feet, it's a variance. So they've had applications for variances. So that's something else you could think about if you want to do that. A variance is harder to get. It's a harder bar, they'd have to prove hardship. But in the cases that have come to the zoning board, I think mostly it's come for sites where there is, like, a steep drop-off, or it's kind of built up. So it's from the finished grade, so there's a reason why the fence is going higher than that eight feet, so.
Yeah, we can, if you just come up and identify yourself, if you have a question. I know you are, but you just, I didn't name an address for the record. It's been a long bit.
Hi, everyone. Kayla Closey, 31 Beacon Street. I have a quick question regarding this topic. So what happens when you have two properties with different grades, as you mentioned, and there is a big discrepancy on that, let's say, three feet, or a little bit more than that? And then the owner who has a higher grade has already... And then the owner who has a higher grade has already built up a fence, let's say six feet. But the, the owner, the, the neighboring will not see that as a six-feet height, but it will see it as nine feet. What would happen? Do you kind of get the midpoint, or?
It's based on the grade.
It'd just be the applicant, the homeowner of the higher grade, it's, you can't hold them to the lower grade, someone else's lot, so it'd be six feet from their lot.
It's on the property, okay, whoever puts the application or built the fence.
Yeah.
You wouldn't need an application at that point.
It's my understanding of how this would work.
Or the way it's written in our definition, our zoning bylaw says combined height of six feet or less, measured from the lowest point of grade adjacent to the fence, or combined wall and fence. So.
It's conservative.
So I assume it's probably on, on the owner's side, I guess.
If your, if your lot is in a depression, for example, or let's, like, tear up on kind of a cliff, they can still put up a six-foot fence, so they started out with a 10-foot, the grade was 10 feet above your property, and they put a six-foot fence.
But the neighbor will see that wall as pretty much from his grade to nine feet, let's say. Okay.
Yeah, so that's probably where this originally came from, is that, you know, the town set it at six feet, that they only wanted six feet, otherwise you have to go to the zoning board for a public hearing. So that's probably why it's written the way it is now, that they didn't want higher without having a public hearing with the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, thanks.
So that is the way it's written now, that you would at least, the zoning board would at least notify all the abutters and have that hearing and look at all the impacts to the adjacent neighborhood. See, it's not something you have to do, it's just something that I know has come up a few times. If you, again, you can.
Keep it there.
Think about it for the next meeting. I could, I could look into some of the other recent applications or inquiries about the fences.
Yeah, if you have other examples, I mean, we've come up in our heads with a few, but if you could come up with other things maybe we haven't thought about that would sway in the other direction of whatever each one of us is thinking. I think examples always do a good job of.
Okay.
Painting the picture for us.
Yeah, especially like when we had those drawings for the town meeting discussion of the changes, you know, the.
The corner.
The corners, and visually see what's going on. Uh, let's see, there's one more item here, accessory setbacks for open space residential district.
Oh, yes, this one came up just yesterday. You have one project that's been approved under the open space residential development, the OSRD, we call it, that's Morgan Farm Road subdivision, that's 10 single-family houses, but it was developed under the open space, OSRD, open space bylaw, which allows for, has different lot size requirements and different setback requirements. However, I know the developer there is inquiring about accessory structures such as a shed. We don't have something in our, that section of the bylaw that says what the setbacks are for accessory structures in this section of the bylaw. We have it elsewhere in the bylaw, that accessory structures such as sheds or garages, if they're under a certain height, are usually about six feet, I think, from the property line. And I just came to my attention that we don't actually have that in.
So this, this is.
The OSRD.
Comes up under special permit application, right?
It could be a special permit or an EIDR. The subdivision, because it was, the Morgan Farm one, that was approved, I think, in 2012, maybe, I'm looking at, because I think maybe 2012, and that was an EIDR, environmental impact design review, because it was single-family. But if it were something like attached, like townhouse units, that would be special permit.
So there'll be a.
Similar to the proposal you heard, the preliminary at, for 215 High Street that you heard at your March meeting, we don't have specific setback requirements for accessory structures.
What do we do in the residential?
We do when it's not OSRD, so we just have general ones.
So if we had it, we could just.
We could just copy.
Copy and paste that into the OSRD as a new.
Yeah, you could take a look at that, or.
It doesn't seem like there's any advantage to not having the setback requirement.
I think it was probably just.
It's, it was an oversight.
Oversight, yeah.
We would review it, I mean, they'd come in with a plan and say, and you'd say, oh, look, this shed is going to be on the property line, and then we could, but it would be easier if we just had the setback.
Yeah, yeah, when they came up with the OSRD bylaw, they just forgot to include this. It's a residential development, they should have setbacks.
Those were the few that I had thought of in the last, perhaps the last year, if you wanted.
So what, we just bring these up at the next meeting again?
Yep.
Fine, and then, do we want to, we had some emails from people, I don't know if any of that is, should we discuss the things that people emailed us about?
Yes, we did have an email from, someone who couldn't be here tonight, and she had recommended, I put it in her packet, reducing the building height from 29 to 36, oh, wait, 229 from the existing 36 feet, decreasing the percentage of the residential units in the FMUD, which is right now 50% total gross floor area. Okay, so it looks like it was copied from the bylaw, but had recommended changes to that. Increase the minimum front setback from zero to 20 feet, that's right now in our business districts, local business, A and B.
So where's A and B?
That's Washington Street and High Street.
Okay.
And then align FMUD six and seven fairly, not spot zoning. I'm not sure what that means, it's not, six and seven are overlaid, are local business districts.
So, when, when she says see below, or says nine, five, 13, is, is this her, like, redline version of the bylaw?
I think that's the exact.
Or is that what it says? It says occupy no more than 33% of the gross, and no more than 50 of the total. So this is, this is the bylaw as it's written?
I think this is, yeah.
I think that's the actual bylaw.
Yeah, so I don't think it's redlined or suggested for, it just says decrease, I think the proposal is decrease the percentage.
So she wants six and seven to look like FMUD one, right? Which is 33%, the total gross floor area. So then it would be only FMUD three that would remain at 50% with her proposal.
Right. And then there's still the 55 or older.
Right, that's, that's.
Separate thing onto the.
That's across the bridge on Everett Street, that was designated at 100% to attract possible 55 and older development. So FMUD one is University Station, right?
Yep, University Ave, yep.
And FMUD three is the one at the.
Glacier Drive around, like Frugal Fannies area.
Okay.
I think that the height reduction is actually a good one in terms of finding that, that balance of, right now, a lot of the buildings in, in six and seven are 36 feet height, so to bring that height down would make it more village feel. It doesn't have to be 29, but it doesn't have to be 36 either.
I think you'd have to do some research to see, can you do a commercial building and get, a lot of the mechanicals go up on the, the top part, and they'll build like a parapet or something to hide it. So there's a lot, you'd have to research and see what, what could be done. I mean, my house is just a little tape, and it's 25 feet to the peak.
I assume, it's like a, 36 allows a three-story, right? So it's.
Generally, it's 10 feet, 10 feet per floor, generally speaking. But in commercial, it can be more, to accommodate more different mechanicals.
And this is, must be in response to the Islington Pizza with the, the multi-use next to it, that's where you see, that came up at FinCom a couple years ago, where there were members saying, they were questioning the, the height difference.
Probably, that, I mean.
That's the only place.
The new buildings are really, I'm just trying to think of what's 36 feet tall. Yeah, it's about three, three stories.
Do you know how tall that new, the building on Washington Street is, next to Islington Pizza?
36 feet.
Yeah, I think it's right around 35 or 36 feet, yeah. 36 feet is the maximum height that's allowed in our local business, so it's not just the FMUD overlays, it's what's in the.
And that's been like that for.
Local business in High Street, on, along High Street and Washington Street, for I don't know how long, probably a long time.
As long as we've had a local business.
Right, you know, it's taken advantage of it until now, and I think they're seeing a discrepancy, as Brian was saying, of the height differences now, and aesthetically, does it fit in? Or do we want to see more continuity in those heights?
Do you know how tall the fire station is in Islington?
I forget.
I don't remember.
I don't remember.
What were we talking, the peak of the?
I'm sure it was within, it's, it's based on the average height, so it's not necessarily the highest point, that's what the 36 feet is. I think it's 36 feet, I would think, I mean, because it was, it was a special permit under the FMUD, the fire station was, and I don't think there was any waivers, right?
Yeah, they didn't waive for the height restriction.
So it must have met the zoning bylaw of the 36 feet.
I think it's, it keeps, it keeps going back to that. We had sort of a alternative proposal at one point, there's, there's definitely concern of, we had this one-story building and a three-story building, and everyone, I think, feels, would have felt better if everything was two stories, but because of the economics of the project, and the state of the building, whatever, it was, that's kind of how it ended up. So we had a proposal for, like, saying you could, in each building it had to be 50% residential, and so these are all, I think, related to the same idea of trying to lower, trying to balance things out better. So, I mean, it's, I'm not sure what we would, how best to proceed, I mean, you could, you could help with a petition article or something, or just kind of, could see if they, if she could come to the next meeting and talk more about it, or, I don't know.
I mean, if, if you're going to bring something forward, it's something you would want to agree to sponsor and bring forward, so you would want to all agree, agree to it, to the change.
She's, I'm sorry, just to clarify, reducing the maximum building, is she talking about just FMUD six and seven, or is just across the board, and all, she didn't identify that that'd be specific to a particular zone? You just put it in there as a bullet point?
I think it's all about, so, and later on, she's got a bullet point, align FMUD six and seven fairly. I mean, that's basically all she's talking about.
Okay.
We can infer from that that that's what she's, right, talking about.
I do like the buffer idea, where there's, there's no buffer requirement. I know it's up to the, the board when we're reviewing at these applications, but I wouldn't want, want to get into a situation like you see in other town centers, where the buildings are right up to the sidewalk.
Oh, the front setback?
Yeah, the setbacks.
Well, we're zero and six right now, right, and 10 on High Street? Are you sure it's zero on?
I think it's.
On Washington Street.
Zero, I think zero in the business districts, front setback, let me just.
I know one of the comments that had come up in the past was that it was very claustrophobic, like, if you're right up on sidewalks.
Well, I think a lot of, I'm not sure when it was put in, but the 2000 comprehensive plan was actually asking to bring the buildings right up to the sidewalk, so they can do parking in the back, you don't see it. So it was in response to what the town wanted 18 years ago, I believe. I could be wrong as to when that came in, but.
Right, I think that is something that, I think it changed, it used to be a greater front yard setback, and then that came out of the comprehensive plan was to bring the buildings forward so that they're.
Want to see the parking lots.
Didn't want the parking in the front.
Because that's what Stagecoach Plaza, so at, where the post office on, over here is, that's the situation, you have a big parking lot in front, and the buildings are set back. And so the idea was to encourage, bring the buildings forward, put the parking in the back.
Yeah, the thinking at that time was, it's more attractive to look at the building as opposed to the car.
Isn't there wetlands behind that, on Stagecoach? Which is why they had to do it in the front, or?
No. That's all asphalt, the whole thing.
It's all, all the way back to Hartford Street.
Right now, the front setback in local business B, which is along Washington Street, is zero, and it's 10, local business A on High Street, so it's 10 feet on High Street.
Any reason why it's 10 on High and zero on Washington?
I think, I mean, if, if at that time, if they looked at that after the comprehensive plan, I would think because the lots on.
There might have been a reaction to the lot solace.
In Washington Street are a little bit smaller than the ones in, smaller than.
Boy, these setbacks were set after the 2000 comprehensive.
Yes, we used to have a greater setback in, I think, on Washington Street, I'm not sure about the High Street one, but it wasn't always zero on the local business districts. I thought that was something that, a zoning change had happened after the comprehensive plan. With the idea to bring the buildings forward, I think that was fairly recent, or within the last 10, 15 years.
All right, so, I think.
There's one other one that, obviously it came up at town meeting, where the concern for affordable housing numbers, and I know that we pushed for accessory apartments, increasing that up to 100, adding 100 to it a couple years back at town meeting.
Or the 2%, from 1% to 2%.
They're two different things.
But by, but by increase, every, every affordable, every accessory apartment is a, is a, is a unit.
So do they, do they count in the denominator?
I didn't think they did.
We don't, I don't know yet, I don't believe they counted in the past census, the previous census, because our records are generally, we consider the property still a single family, the one, so if you have one property, it's still a single family.
That's right.
But I don't know, going forward in the next census, how they, I don't know how they look at that, or how they really evaluate it.
Right, well, no one knows.
I don't know for sure.
No rules of the 2020 census just yet.
Yeah, so I'm not.
So we can only go with what we know from the 2010 census.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't know what exactly they use in 2010, but the way the town looks at it, we consider, if you have an accessory apartment on your property, we still look at it as a single family.
I thought the question was asked when we.
One, single family.
Just one unit.
When we did increase the number of permits for the accessory apartments, I thought the question was asked and answered that it does not count against the inventory.
You've got two different people living there, though, and some are paying rent.
But it's still considered a single, a single residency.
Westwood.
Because it's only an accessory apart, it's not a, it's not a secondary dwelling.
We just, we need some.
We need the answer.
Yeah.
We just, and I think, you know, Abby's, in, in 2010, she said it counted as one unit.
That's what I believe, but I'm not, I'm not sure, I don't know.
If it's different than that, then we should know, just so, any decisions we make going forward, they're fully informed decisions.
Yeah, but I don't know, it's something that anyone has the answers to, I don't think it's.
Well, when they do the inventory, there's a list of houses, right? I mean, we don't know what the future might hold, but we can confirm what was done in the last.
The accessory apartment can be in addition to the house, it can be a separation within the house.
Right.
It can be another building in the back of the property.
Yeah, so, right, so that's it, too, it could look at, it depends on, because yes, if it's within, if it's within the same building, if it's like within the, you know, primary residence, or if it's in like a carriage house, kind of. I think the way, when you look at the subsidized housing inventory, I think it's based on, that denominator is based on year-round housing units.
I think this is a good question, I mean, you can just, it's, the issue is clear, it's like, for, ask for guidance from, who is it, DH, CH, whatever?
DHCD is.
DHCD.
State Department of Housing Community Development. D H C D is State Department of Housing Community Development.
Is the town required to count accessory apartments as a component of the subsidized housing index, or for, is it, does it count, you know, towards the total number of dwelling units in the town, independent of the main?
I'm almost positive, we were told it does not, but in the meantime, we...
That might be, that might have been the case, yeah, I don't...
On our bylaws, I mean, these people are allowed to come in and apply for one.
Right, so right now, or, yep, right now...
So we can't deny it, because we're fearful that in a year and a half, there might be something, we can't deny an accessory apartment.
Well, and if it is, if they are countable, then the opposite could be true, I mean, that's another creative way to try to meet the S H I, would be to give homeowners incentives to make their properties affordable somehow, but they'd have to go through...
Affordable accessory apartments?
Yeah, I mean, it is already a potential...
Another acronym to come up with.
It does potentially provide another way of serving the, the greater need of just, um, units that are more affordable, so if you, the idea of an in-law apartment, instead of them renting somewhere else, or being crammed into the, whatever, like, it's, it's, but whether it counts is a different question.
Because right now, we're, if they counted today, we're, we're under ten percent.
Yeah, so it makes a difference if they're counted or not, I just don't know if they will be counted, and if they have been counted in the past.
I mean, even without accessory apartments, we're under ten percent if we're counted today, if we counted today, the census.
Um...
So why don't we just take that and find out from Sarah?
Okay, but I don't, I don't know that, I don't think anyone knows the answer right now, that's, that's the hard part, I don't think there is no answer.
What did we submit in two thousand and ten? That's all we can go by. You look.
I don't know how we do that, it goes to what, the census, the U.S. census?
Someone's asking for the information, we either mail this or email it to them.
Information somewhere, we just gotta figure out where to find that information.
We must have justified the, I mean, when they did the calculation and said we had twelve, thirteen percent, or whatever, it was, uh...
Oh, yeah.
They took an actual number from us.
So I guess, probably thus for D H C D, who does that calculation, I guess, but I, I think we have inquired, and we haven't had, don't have an answer.
Well, if we can't get anything, we'll surprise us.
Okay, um, let's, should, let's consider this other, there's another email, um...
That was more about the comprehensive plan, if you're ready to go into that.
All right, so I think, are we, we think we've discussed the, these items pretty thoroughly, we'll bring them back to the next meeting, as we formulate, um, actual articles, and that, start to kick that whole process off, I guess, for this, for, uh, Ms. Fusco's email and stuff, we've discussed it a lot, it doesn't sound like there's a great, like, we would just say, oh, yeah, let's do that, but I think it's, um, maybe get, if you could share the comments here, and see what, if she wants to pursue it further with us, or if we don't want to do it, then she could do it as a petition article.
You could, you could invite her to your next meeting on the seventh, where you're gonna talk about it again.
I think putting it into a, you know, because we always talk about, you know, the people, um, how do we get this process open, you know, we, individually, we might not support something, but how do we get it, so that we don't, are not telling people, oh, you missed the, the one meeting that you should have been at, well, here we are at the very beginning, we have a proposal, it just needs to be more specific and everything, so. All right, so let's move on to the next item on the agenda, I believe, that was all for the zoning items, and we're on to the comprehensive plan, so, Abby, or, how do you want to report from the subcommittee?
So Debbie, Chris and I did meet, um, recently, um, we mostly did a lot of brainstorming of how would this work, kind of looking at the logistics, talked a lot about, um, like a steering committee, should we have a steering committee, should we not, how would that, who would be on that, how that would look, um, so we met, is that about a week and a half ago, about a week and a half ago, maybe almost two weeks ago, um, so then, my homework was try to flush it out a little bit, um, so then I had started with these questions that we got, I think I had kind of found them as, in like a work plan for a comprehensive plan, think about these major questions to start, so I kind of wrote them out, and, um, so after we met, I kind of was looking at it a little bit more, um, than when Debbie and Chris and I met about steering committee, and I, I found out a little bit more about what we've done in the past, and, um, so I think it's best to have a steering committee, um, I think when we were successful with our comprehensive plan now, that, that was adopted in two thousand, or, most of the work was in two thousand, I think maybe it was adopted in early two thousand and one, um, we did have, um, a steering committee, um, I think we had a lot of people on it, maybe close to forty, um, people, um, but I've, I've learned since then, you don't necessarily, they don't have to meet on, you know, every week, every other week, as similar to this board does, they can, um, have smaller groups, and they can work on their own, so I think that's a little bit more manageable, um, so, when I've thought about it, um, so I would recommend there being a steering committee of about ten, or, um, ten to fifteen, possibly twenty, is that what I said, steering committee members, when I, I was just kind of looking at, where did they have that question?
Twelve to eighteen, you're right.
Twelve to eighteen, right, so where I kind of came up with that number is, there's eight elements, eight sections in the, um, comprehensive plan that you have to have, a ninth we want to add, that's a resiliency and sustainability element, so that would be nine, and then each section will also have its own goals and objectives for each one, um, so then you could have at least one person who's focused on each section, um, and then, um, the idea, I thought, is, and, and what we had done in the past is kind of, um, put out letters of interest, if people are interested in, um, serving on the steering committee, would have some kind of, you know, individual expertise in the subject matter, so they might be a housing expert, or transportation expert, or climate, resiliency, and sustainability, kind of a focus area, they know a lot about that, so they can help lead that section, they'd work with the rest of the steering committee, um, they'd work with you, the planning board, um, so the steering committee, I was thinking, and the planning board could help spearhead this effort, but the, um, steering committee members would really kind of be a project manager for each element, um, and then I thought it might be manageable, if their steering committees, they would have, maybe, I was thinking, maybe three or four meetings on their own, the steering committee to get ready, and then they would often come to planning board meetings, so they would, you know, regularly, you could have on your agenda, um, probably comprehensive plan update reviews on probably all of your meeting agendas, you know, maybe if you have a night where you have a lot of applications, maybe you can't do it then, but, you know, every week, or every, sorry, your bi-weekly meetings, you could respond to questions, comments, review updates, and then, as the steering committee moves further along, you can invite those individuals in to report to you and summarize their findings, that's how I was kind of thinking of it, um, also, the board of selectmen traditionally are the, is the appointing authority, um, so I'd recommend keeping that the same, of having them go out, or staff and you, and we all work, um, to get the word out, to have people who are interested in serving in the steering committee, but have the board of selectmen be the appointing authority of that steering committee.
I'm curious how people feel about that.
Okay, yes.
I think we want to, we need, we need the selectmen, you know, to be engaged in this process, we want everything involvement, and all, just feels kind of funny that we would say, you appoint the steering committee, we're back to where we were with the last committee that didn't produce anything, I mean, the one, two or three years ago, whatever.
The one from, and then in two thousand and thirteen around, we had started another effort, and I think, so that's where I think it got cumbersome, was where they tried to create subcommittees, and that they would each meet, meet together, and, um, you know, they need to have your own meetings, minutes, postings, finding rooms, and all that takes up a lot of time, that's why I was thinking, in this way, we can help with that, so they could come to these meetings, and then we have Jessica here, and myself, we can help, we have the room, we have the room ready, uh, and we can help with the, the minutes and coordinating them coming here, and kind of have a schedule in place, so we at least have a timeline, so that we could give to steering committee members to try to work with them on, you know, looking at, here's the planning board's meeting schedule, if you could try to, you know, we would work with them to have, um, their work done, um, in time to, to come to your meetings.
I see the challenges that...
Time to go on meetings.
Is the, I find, like, the pen to paper is, I see, is taking the most time, I see a lot of meetings, but you, you need the doc, yeah, we have the original document to react from, but then who's going to be doing the actual modification? Is this going to be outsourced, or?
No.
No, each, I think, you said...
So what I'm, we don't have, we don't have a budget, um, for outside help or consultants, so what, what I've kind of looking at this, and then after we met, I was kind of putting together a timeline of how this would work, I think, so, you know, the next few months, myself and staff would work on updating the existing, um, document, at least updating the data, like the demographics, how those have changed, um, you know, housing information, um, and kind of updating, you know, in the notes, you know, redline version, done, achieved, done, not done, outstanding, not, and kind of prepare a draft for the steering committee, then have the steering committee be appointed in October, give them a draft to get started, and then, um, in November, they would start working on it, and, um, outreach in their own areas.
So could, could this be like, you'd have, so for like the land use element, you might have a couple of people, so there's, there's steering committee of people who have committed to project manage the development of each element of the plan, some of them might do more than one, but, um, let's say land use, there's two people, but then they would still have, they would still have their own meetings, they would bring in other interested people, working groups essentially, so they would, they would be responsible for bringing to us a plan that is, or the component of the plan that's, uh, that meets what we want, which is that it's reflective of the whole community and everything, so it wouldn't just be like two people who go write the land use part, and it wouldn't require that we appoint ten people to the land use element subcommittee either.
Right, so I think that's kind of what happened the last, the last time, um, when we started this, I think we had several people, seven to ten people on each section.
Because I, I like...
Your suggestion is two people, and let them round up their own working group?
Well, I think we want, I want to see people involved in this, that it's not just appointing a group of ten people who have to go to every meeting, I'm thinking there's two people who run it, and then we say, well, have you, have you talked to the high school kids, and, have you talked to seniors, have you, have you got people participating in these working groups who care about the different issues, and like, have it be, I want to have a lot of people involved in this somehow, but I don't want to create this structure where they, um, you know, have to be appointed, and then have to go to lots of meetings, and they kind of burn out and disappear, I feel like that's kind of what happened, or, I don't know if they disappeared, but it's just looking for some sort of a balance between the formal sort of task force committee structure, and just sort of the free-for-all, which I agree, it's not going to work if we just tried to do it all ourselves, and said, hey, everybody come in and be a part of this, I think, no, you have, you have a couple of people, though, who are, you're responsible for land use, and report back to us, and, um, every meeting is public, everything they do, all these working groups and all should be posted and advertised, and as if it was a full-on public meeting, but I just don't want to have to have everyone be appointed to it, and go through all that kind of thing.
Well, if they meet, it has to be a public meeting.
Well, I was thinking if they meet as a whole steering committee, that might not be that often, and then, so maybe I was imagining it three, four times as a, as a full committee where they would have to do as a steering committee, but otherwise, they could come here, so they could, we could have, so, how I think of it as, um, when I'm looking at the timeline, if we want to try to do this within a year, if we have a steering committee of these ten to fifteen individuals who are acting as, you know, experts, and, um, ready to lead in, um, one of the planned elements, um, so they would be hopefully appointed in early October, and then staff, we, I would get them a draft of the existing plan with those updates, so, updates as where we are today, for them to review, and then they would meet, they probably have the first meeting as a steering committee in mid-November, to have their kind of kickoff meeting, this is what their, you know, their first meeting, and then they would review those draft updates, and then also start working on a survey, a community survey, um, then I was thinking the survey would be, um, like, open after that, so probably like December, January, and then they would also be preparing for a vision session, townwide vision session in February, um, and that would be hosted by the steering committee, open to everyone, we don't have money for consultant, but I would love it if we could have some, a little bit of money, at least for a, the vision session, or like, to help facilitate and moderate, uh, someone who's really experienced in running those kinds of meetings, where we have a townwide meeting, where everyone can really talk about what they want, debate issues, talk about goals and, and vision, so someone, I think we need someone who's really experienced in that to help facilitate that.
That's a consideration work, we should get a budget for that, and we didn't.
They did apply for, um, I think they applied for, it was a grant that was available, so they had a, they had a consultant that helped with the vision session that we had last February, so if we had, I'm thinking something like that, I think, I think if we could at least have someone, a little bit of help with facilitating a public meeting, then, um, November through, um, February, those steering committee members would continue to work on each of those items, based on what they have, what they've received in the survey, um, the vision session, and then they'd also be responsible for, um, going to different groups, um, different organizations, different agencies, different committees, to, um, work on their areas, then, they could each, I was thinking, starting in March, they could come back to you at all your planning board meetings, you know, you might have, your planning board meetings, um, you know, focus on housing for one meeting, then the next meeting focus on transportation, and, and break it down for the subgroups.
So for these working groups, uh, subcommittee members, there's two in charge of economic development, Tom Smith and Susan whatever, are the two steering committee members who are in charge of that, it is up to them to go recruit people to, from the rest of town, to, basically, create a working group, and talk about economic development, is my understanding that?
Yes, to help develop the plan, but it doesn't, they would, essentially, they would be the working group responsible for...
Updating the document.
Updating, writing the plan.
I get that they're, they're creating the work product, but they, I presume, are they going to be soliciting input from the rest of town, people who are interested in offering that, or are we limited to the, we're not limited to those two viewpoints?
Then, but, we would still also do the community-wide survey, a vision session, and anything else we can think of, but yes, we would want them to really take the lead on...
We would want to help them.
And help them, yes, yeah, so, yeah, so I think they all need help, yeah.
That's asking why someone's doing this for free.
I think we need, we need a point of contact, that, so like, if I, if somebody comes to me and says, I want to talk about housing, 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 you're like, oh, well, you should be on the steering committee, and they say, oh, I don't want to be on a committee, but I can go to like three meetings, then I'll tell them, all right, well, Tom is the, you know, Anna is the, uh, those two are in charge of that group, so, get in touch with them, and go to their meetings.
And one of the things that I had brought up was, maybe each one of us should be, have you used the word liaison, for those two steering committee members...
Yes, yes.
To work with the planning board, because they're not going to come before us all the time, but they need an email, someone on the board, or obviously Abby, to, oh, this is what we're thinking of doing, and you say, well, that's great, but that's illegal, you can't do that, or, they might not be thinking of these things, or, that's great, but that flies in the face of what we're doing, you're getting off topic.
So we sponsor, we kind of sponsor the, or, we're like another representative, so you've got maybe the two people, plus one of us on each element.
Right, or we're responsible for two, if we have, you know, nine, or, you know, plus the intro, or whatever, um, and I, you had asked earlier about how people felt about the steering committee, I, I think, one, the selectmen have been doing it, whether it produced anything, it's, it's, I don't think, the fact that they didn't produce anything, I think is irrelevant to the fact that they were the ones who assigned them, I think there were other things going on... I think there were other things going on that prevented it from happening. But I think this has to be, we have to be distanced from this committee makeup, this steering committee makeup. And I think that the selectmen are perfect, it, it becomes just a planning board thing.
Fun, too, I think.
And we get no buy-in from the selectmen.
And I think I hadn't thought about the idea of like, it's really, we have a representative planning board, we have these people appointed by the selectmen, and we have everybody else who wants to be a part of that can all work on it, so it's not just limited to the people who are appointed, so.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, anyone who wants to be a part of it, that's great, go to the working groups. Two people will be in charge of the work product and running this.
Therein lies the problem. Everybody wants to be involved, and half of those people want to be in charge. And those are the problems you run into with these grassroots organizations.
You can't avoid that. You can't, not everyone can be the chief.
I agree, but there will be people who are going to throw a card, a wrench in this groundwork.
That's why I think the planning board needs to distance itself and let the selectmen take care of that. We are, I can't come up with an analogy, but they're the, they're like the general manager selecting the team, and we're the coaches saying, now go do this.
I think this gets, it kind of sets up a nice structure of, yeah, we don't, if we're all in it too deep, then we're going to get, it's going to be a mess.
Yeah, this can't strictly be a planning board product. It has to be.
And we have to have some hard and fast rules of how this is going to operate to keep the train rolling forward, because it'll get bogged down in the mud quicker than you can pull it.
I think what you're going to find, you're going to find some steering committee members are going to be really into it, and others are not, and it's almost going to be like a high school project, where one kid does most of the work, but all three in the group, in the group project, get the credit. Right. I think that's very possible, that it could happen that way. And I don't know how we, and that's where the selection of the steering committee is not in our lap. And I think if we let the selectmen do it.
I agree, I think that's, that is a better way to do this.
I mean, we, have we had the current, this current document peer reviewed? Because I'm just, I'm just wondering how far, how far off? I know, I know items need to be updated, and there's a, you know, we have the vision of the town, some things aren't included in this. But I'm wondering from a peer review, how far off are we? I mean, it's, it's a 48-page document.
What do you mean, how far off?
Meaning, if, if this was peer reviewed by an expert looking at these types of documents, what would they think about this current document as it stands?
Well, I think primarily it hits the things that the state says we have to hit.
No, I know, but, but on it, so for instance, we have a transportation section already in there.
Yeah.
I read through it, it's, it's aligned with what I would think is the vision of the town, with some exceptions.
Yeah, it may not need to be changed.
So that's what I mean.
Yeah.
You make it lucky to sit on a committee that doesn't need to do it, done a work.
Right.
Well, you would want to, I think what we do in the next couple of months is update that information, what has changed since this plan in 2000. But then that's important for the steering committee members to gather information from the whole community about what that, what the goals are, do they still apply? Does the vision still apply? Do they still want the same things we wanted back then? And if not, what do we want now? So that's, so I think the steering committee members will have a lot of work to do, but they'll also have help from staff. I mean, I think myself would probably be the, I'm the main project manager, but working closely with the steering committee and you, the planning board, to help guide them. And then they would also work with staff from all different departments, public works, building, conservation.
Well, I think, I thought of this, if I was a steering committee member, I would want to have a copy of the old plan and the old plan with the updated numbers. Now I have everything in front of me, now let's talk to everyone. How do these numbers change how I think the town should grow in the future? And it might be, the new numbers don't change anything. And this transportation, or whatever you want to throw in there, town-centered element, no. In the, at the end of the day, it's not hugely different than it was 18 years ago. We just rewrite it to reflect, you know, that this changed very little.
Nothing's changed in High Street in those 18 years, you know?
Well, some have, I mean, it's a new library.
Not to any extent, really.
But that's, I think it's important that we give, we can't give the steering committee a blank canvas. We need, they need some guidance. They need, this is what we have, and we're here to tweak this. We're not here to rewrite it, because if you rewrite it, you're probably going to lose, lose these elements.
I think that just by taking what we have and bringing in additional people, you're going to find out that, yeah, a lot of people's perceptions have changed in the town. There are a lot of newer people in town, and then they're going to look at this and have a different reaction than people. They might say, oh, yeah, things have been, you know, it's, it's going along according to plan. It's like.
Or they might look at the new data and they go, oh, I didn't realize that.
I think there's a lot.
That's different from what am I, what I thought was going on in town.
I mean, I think a lot of this exercise, it's, it is, it's people, engaging people to learn about what's changed and what's, what the conditions are, and kind of what's possible. Like, what could we, what do we want to see in the future? And then kind of have that bump up against, you know, what would it take to have, to make a change? And how much, what can you do? You'll find out, oh, the planning board can't cause businesses to spring up all over town. You know, we can't cause a new coffee shop to appear. There's a lot of things we, we don't have control over. And I think that exercise for people to get involved in discussing these things, that is more valuable than the ultimate paper product that comes out of it.
Ideally, how many people, you have the planning board liaison, let's say two steering committee members per element.
What do we get?
How many other people?
Six elements?
Do you think? Now we have nine.
Nine, nine.
We're looking to have nine.
I think it depends on the issue. I think some of these issues, there'll be a couple of people.
Obviously, it's going to change. Some people are going to be really into town center element, and others, you know, transportation, like, no. We get two sign-ups, I don't know. But what number would you say is too many? Or, I mean, zero, gives us just the steering committee members writing this whole thing with no input. But what do you do if no one signs up?
Somebody has to do the boring stuff.
Well, that becomes the steering committee members, the two people.
Right, so that would be, yeah, it would be.
And that's a very like, it's, I brought this up at our meeting. It's, it's like college where you're signing up for club, you know, clubs. Some clubs get no signatures. And it could be, that's what happens with community facilities element, I don't know. And if that happens, what do we do? And it may not be an issue, we might get five people for every one, it might, we might get 25 people for every one.
I think it, it takes a little bit of priming the pump, you know? If you say, okay, we're going to have a meeting, and we're going to talk about community facilities and the planning for the next 20 years, then.
Crickets.
Crickets, okay. If you say, you know, we're, town's considering, you know, whether we really need all these buildings or, I, you know, there are ways to put it out there provocatively that will.
And I get, and that's where we're going to need town staff to help, because these two steering committee members are not going to go knocking on doors and cold-call people, say, come join us in facility, you know, community facilities element. We need something, after these two people are identified and placed in this position, how do we get them to get people involved? It might, some of these might be very easy, others might be very difficult to find people who are interested.
Because then the next step after that, is that when you have the visioning session after this, or is it before?
Yeah, I'm thinking we would have, you know, start looking for the steering committees in the next, soon. Ideally, maybe have them appointed in October. So we'd have to have people, you know, we have to do a wide search for interested people in October. First, I think myself and other staff should work on updating at least the current section. So we'll be getting it ready to hand off to the steering committee members.
And we have to.
And outreach to find steering committee members.
But that's the selectmen.
Yes, but we can help spread the word.
Spread the word, yeah, that's fine.
Yes, I think we'd have the selectmen.
But we need to tell the selectmen, it's a go. With the steering committee, do whatever it is you do to find the people, and we'll help find more, more people too.
Dave, well, who's on the steering committee? What is the, so what is the, what is the higher structure here? So Abby is obviously at the top of the pyramid.
I would think steering committee of, I guess it depends how much interest we get. But I had suggested maybe 11 to 15 steering committee members, who would likely have to submit letters of interest to the board of selectmen, what, what their interests are and, and how they can help. I know when Debbie and Chris and I met, we kind of talked about what's a little job description for the steering committee members. So I probably, you know, I had, one of my questions on here was, I think it would be significant, you know, time commitment, but, you know, I threw out approximately 30 to 50 hours throughout the process. So it's not necessary they're going to be working on this every, you know, for hours each week, but they might, you know, going to meetings might take a couple hours.
With nine sections, we're going to need 18 alone, just for, you know, two.
Well, this, I think, would be, each person would probably spend about 30 to 50, maybe, over the course of a year.
No, he's saying nine sections, we need 18 people, not 11.
We're going to need 18 people minimum on these steering.
Some of these sections are not the, I think we can combine some of them.
Yeah, some of them, yeah, some of them could be, yeah.
If they're willing to, if, if they have a meeting in housing and a meeting in community facilities in the same week.
Give them a fun one and a boring one.
Yeah, well, I think people would, you'd want to see who the board of selectmen get and who's interested and what their areas of expertise are, so someone might be.
It's some of the, it can go multiple categories with the same.
Could be combined, could possibly be combined.
Yeah, and I mean, some, some things are easier to, like, I mean, transportation element, the pedestrian bike committee, they'll be, they'll easily get a couple of people off of there that'll go for that. And open space will easily get people. Facilities, I mean, maybe the task force, yeah, so some things will go.
But we, we need, I think we need to have, as Brian was saying, the higher, we need to have something in place, show it to the selectmen, and say, fill these spots. This is what we need. This is how we see this working well. Please fill these 18 spots, or however many you can get. Eighteen might be ideal, and maybe, maybe we get 11.
I want to add another element, that's another thing I wanted to talk about, if we agree with all these elements. Although I think the eight are required, right?
Yeah, these are required, and then we suggest adding the resilience and sustainability element. So you can add, we can add more.
I mean, I was just thinking, is there a place for like governance and civic engagement, like these whole?
They're practicing it right now.
But in what, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, like, the idea of, of a, where the town is better at engaging with people so that you avoid contentious town meetings, where basically like you incorporate ideas for transparency and engagement into the future of the, of all the town boards and everything, and just.
Make that part of the comprehensive report?
I think it's one of the biggest problems in the town right now, is the disconnect. Some people feel like, you know, very negative about things, and other people don't see it. I think that's changing that sort of atmosphere. I mean, that's a national problem too, but it's like.
I don't think you'll ever wipe that out entirely. Some people will feel disconnected.
So where would things like, just kind of the, are there, we've had bylaw review committees and stuff that were about kind of the, you know, the proposals for changing the way town meeting works, like the indefinite postponement stuff, the, how petition articles are handled, things like that. I mean, they've kind of come up in various town meetings, but I think, you know, is there?
But those are all bylaws that are set forth in writing. Just because somebody doesn't know about them doesn't mean they weren't there to be found. Anyone can read, you know.
I don't think it's a bad, it's not a bad.
The rules of the open meeting and realize what can be done and what can't be done.
It's not a bad idea, I mean, like, I don't, in the, in a brainstorm activity, I think it's fine. Because a lot of people don't know how to.
That's why I just asked you, how do you implement it, what you're talking about? I don't know, and who is the body that implements it?
So I would, I would look, I would look at other towns and see, in their comprehensive plan, do they have an element like that? That's what I would do. Because nobody's knocking that idea. It's a good idea.
I mean, different communities do different things, you know? Some have added things like health, you know, health, you know, health or food, you know, agricultural specific sections or.
Yeah, so far, we're adding the resiliency and sustainability.
So is resilience.
I wasn't shooting down the idea, I, I just wanted to know, how do you do that? And I, I know you don't have the answer, we're brainstorming here, that's, but that was my nature, Greg, how do you do that?
Well, for, for instance, me, when I got involved in town, I called up town hall and, and set up a meeting, but I was assertive. There's a lot of people who are, who aren't going to think like that, and so they don't even, they don't even know how these committees are set up. We, we recruited a few people for the pedestrian and bike and safety at the meeting two weeks ago. But it's, but some people don't know how to get involved. And then once they know how to get involved, it's not, it's not that they're, I think we're going to have trouble getting people to help out here, to be honest with you. Because it's work.
And it's work for free.
Right.
And I want to make sure that they're producing this thing. We're tweaking it, and we're approving it or not. They have to be good at it. I mean, they have, this is a skill set. This is, this is not just, let's talk at a cocktail party, and we'll, we'll come up with all the answers. This is actually work, and they have to be good at writing, you know? And we're talking about 18 people, or at least half of them, because one of them has to do the writing. We need nine people who can write a document that's going to be our governing document for the next 15 years, at least a part of that document.
And that's why I was asking, like, if it's been peer reviewed by an expert, to even see, like, how far off are we really? Beyond concepts, how far off are we?
That's why, when you start, starting from the previous plan, it shouldn't, they shouldn't stray too far in terms of going crazy, like, saying, oh, well, I'm.
Right, and that's where I think having the liaison with the planning board, say, stay on topic here. It's not, this is not your, you were not tasked to solve that problem. You're talking about this right now.
I think once you start these discussions, I think you will get, the problem will be how to slow down the input. Like, I mean, but it's, you're right, I mean, there were, people want to come to a meeting and, and deliver their vision of the world and leave, and have somebody write it down, right? I mean, I know that's.
It's easy to do. I just want to be heard.
But that's kind of the, the challenge, is to capture all that somehow. I mean, it's, it's just, if we make it like, oh, you have to, you have to commit 50 hours to, and go to every meeting, and then we'll try to get your comment included. But that's why that would exclude so many people. But we get the core people in, and then have a series of work group meetings where people can come in and take these discussions wherever they want to go, and then have, you need strong people to rein it in, and.
That's, I see two worst-case scenarios. One, there's two people on a steering committee, nobody signs up. Having a party and no one showed up.
Well, they sign up and do nothing.
That's another byproduct of that. The second is, we have 40 people, and these two people aren't skilled to run a meeting with, with this many people and get something out of it. That, because you need to know how to run a meeting with that kind of number.
And the question's going to be from everybody, all right, well, what do you want from me? What do you want me to do with this?
Exactly.
I know it's.
And we need to give them guidance.
Abby, what's your response to that?
I mean, I, I don't think it's going to be an overwhelming amount of work for them. I don't thi, that's why I'm trying to think it as, the steering committee members don't have to go to every single meeting. They'll focus on their certain areas, or if there are more than one. So I think they'll likely would all come to the vision session, they'll come to their beginning meeting, and then they'll go out, you know, on, on their own time and with their schedule and try to work, work out, you know, contact with the other groups that need to be with. Then you'll also have your meetings, where we can focus on certain areas that people can come to. So I'm thinking of having multiple ways of people to comment. And then also, with each of your meetings, times where people can send their comments in. And then, once drafts are created, you know, as you move into the winter and spring, when you start focusing your meetings on having these steering committees come in, the members on their certain area. So you might have an agenda that's focused on two sections. People who are interested in that can come to that meeting, we could have the draft posted, people could send in comments. You could respond to comments at the, at that meeting.
I think, I, I like your idea.
So I think they'll have work, you know, at certain times, you know, they might do a few hours a week, but then they'll have other weeks where they're not doing too much. But I think the important thing is to look at it as a 12, 14-month process, not something that's going to go on this work, heavy workload indefinitely, it's.
I think it would be helpful, as a steering committee member, as I think about this, almost to have like a syllabus. You need to have this by February, you need to be here by April, you need to be.
You have to have dropped the dates.
But we need to convey this on the outset, at the outset of, this is what's expected of you. You're going to take this ball and run with it.
And you're going to deliver a final report by this date.
And we need updates, you need to be here by.
Yeah, it's a very.
December, here by February.
Very clear, this is what, this is what we're asking, and here's the job description, here's what the deliverable is.
You need to be finished by.
Yeah. Needs to be all laid out for them. Yeah, it needs to be all laid out for them.
So I'm thinking as a, you know, the good part about having them come to planning board meetings and having the schedule, will be your schedule, usually at the end of the year for the following year, that I would kinda, I would work with them, but kinda treat them as an applicant. You know, you, this is what you need to do, try that for this next meeting, you know, this is what they should, try to guide them on what, what they should be doing.
Can I just throw a, a different approach to this? At our last planning board meeting, it sounded like we were going to have planning board members assigned to each one of these. And what we're talking about tonight is different, right?
I think we're still, we would.
I think we're using the word liaison. So they'd be the contact person for the, for that, for those, that steering committee member or two. If they, they want, they need to touch base with us. They don't have to wait for one of our meetings. They can, they can reach out to us. So you might be assigned land use element and one other, and one other one. So those four committees, steering committee members, if they have a question, they would reach out to you and then you could reach out to Abby. Or they can reach out, always reach out to Abby directly.
I was wondering if that's not too, if that's not close enough to get the outcome that we want, which is.
Well, I think, I, I think as a planning board member, you should be apprised of, when are they meeting? When's this, and then if you can go, go. And, I mean, it's always gonna be better. But it didn't, I mean, if you're involved with two, plus the planning board, it can get a little time consuming to go to all these meetings.
I know.
For free. You know, we all have other aspects of our lives to live.
I'm just concerned about the pro, the, not necessarily the product, but the, the productivity.
Well, I think as the liaison, it's kind of, you're like the quarterback for these two elements and you kind of steer it.
Okay.
You know, steer the steering committee.
Steer the steering.
No, so, so the way it was described before, I was, I was thinking that they were coming to us, but you, but we would each be assigned to a number of these.
That's what we talked about, as a way to keep us connected.
Right, okay, that's.
Not as a group, because that, that becomes every other week.
Yeah, that works for me. That sounds good.
But that way you don't have to think about all nine elements. You just have to think about two of them.
And we're not there, and we're still connected to the.
Again, some of these, as we said, may not require a whole lot of tweaking from the original. It may literally just be updating and then all the feedback comes like, you know, they were on point eighteen years ago for whatever, anything. We don't have to do a lot. We, we agree still with that.
So I guess the outcome of this meeting is that we should have a structure set up, the organization for that, so that it can be presented.
I think that's what we, I think we present the selectmen.
Yeah.
This is what, how we wanna pursue this. Please pick these people, these positions.
Well, we have to come up with a number. How many people?
An ideal number. This is what, these are the positions we have created. Please fill them.
So do you, are you ready to make those kind of recommendations now or do you wanna wait to your next?
Well, how long, if we wait to the next one, that puts us in August before we even come up with something.
Then we should start.
They don't get it till end of August, whenever their li- next meeting is. We're, having it filled by October.
We still have the subcommittee for this board.
Abby, can you just email out what you, your summary of what we've been talking about? And then we can respond to you if there are any tweaks to that organization. But it sounds like we're all aligned.
I mean, is it still pretty consistent with what I had sent out on Friday?
I'll reread that.
Did everyone get a chance to read these?
Yeah, I did. What are you asking?
Um, you know, the timeline, I guess the structure, I could update the structure a little bit.
Yeah, where do you have the structure?
Liaison.
The structure is, we can tweak the timeline as needed.
Yeah, I mean, this timeline is a goal. It's not like the world's gonna end if, if it doesn't get completed by next year. But this is a goal timeline, um, to be able to make fall town meeting two thousand nineteen.
But what I was thinking, Abby, is so in addition to this, just stating what the, the composition of the steering committee, how, how each, how a planning board member fits into that steering committee, the way that they, they will then present the information to the planning board.
So is a full board ready? I, I mean, I was thinking of kind of being liaison to certain areas, so if they have questions, you could help guide them. But without being a formal steering committee member, I was thinking of trying to separate that.
We should be like the other, sort of, the regular participants, but we're, you know, the liaison. So we don't, I think we don't wanna be appointed to this steering committee. We're just, we say, well, I'll take, uh, you know, a couple of things.
Yeah, I, we can't show up as members of the steering committee and the planning board.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, we just.
So you would be liaisons to certain areas, but then they would also be presenting to you as a group throughout the process and then.
Periodically.
Periodically, yep. And then you could also, I mean, you would all still be, if you're interested, you could still go to other meetings. So you, I'm sure all want to go to the, like, the vision session. You should have a vision session that you would all go to.
We just have to be careful. If three of us show up at a working group meeting.
But it's okay for things like vision session.
Right, no, visions, that's just a few times.
With town wi- townwide events.
But if three of us decide we will, and we don't talk to each other, and we show up at the economic development, then we're, one of us would have to leave.
Every meeting out here, we run the risk of that.
Right, well.
Imagine be keeping the meetings.
But we're not talking about town stuff there.
I mean, that's, we could just notice, well, it really gets.
It's, the working group, you can't do notice of that.
But I think every meeting of the working groups should be, the thing I wanna, the other thing is that, how can we have it so that these working groups are not, um, stifled by open meeting law things like, so they, I want them to, they should, everything should be in public. But then the working group members should be able to send an email to the, uh, steering committee person for that topic area without it becoming a big question of, you know, you have to be in, at the meeting or else.
Does the steering committee fall into the same restrictions?
Yeah, but that's, well, I mean, I was kinda thinking of not, they might not have many official meetings of the, and I think their working groups, a lot of their working groups will be here with you.
With us.
At planning board meetings, yeah. I mean, they might, if they're not meeting as a full steering committee, if it's not a majority of the steering committee, they don't need to have a, um, like, full, fully posted meeting. That's what I'm thinking, like, if there's two of, that's what I'm thinking, if there's about two of them on each section, they can continue to work on it. They could visit other committees or talk to other organizations that can help them or get information. They could work on that without posting it.
So like, if you have twelve, fifteen people on the steering committee and two of them are on, um, economic development and one of us is a liaison, the three of us, if we wanted to, we could all go to, um, the open space meeting or something, you know, to, we could do whatever we want to at that kind of thing. And we could have a working meeting here where we invite everybody from, um, you know, from a school or something that, or we just, a bunch of random people show up. It's all, it's all okay, because the whole steering committee is not meeting. And you don't have, um, it's not meeting of the whole committee.
That's what I'm thinking. And then also in your agenda, we'd have on your agendas when we're gonna be, when you invite, when they move further along for after.
I mean, I think we should use this space and I think it should be that these working group meetings should be, um, publicly noticed because I just wanna avoid, um, it's always this back and forth, but it's, we don't want it to be like they just go off and come up with something and then someone says, I never heard about that. It's like, let's just have, let them have the.
I think that's Abby saying that the working group meetings happen in our planning board meetings.
Yeah, a lot of the workings happen in your meetings.
Which unfortunately, we have three applications. We're not done till ten o'clock. Then we start talking about.
Well, I would try not to schedule them on those days, but.
I know, I know that, but at some point though, if we do get heavy, we've had to push them out now six weeks and three meetings have gone by. We haven't had a chance to talk to anybody.
And what I found with this type of a document, I find is, you have a group working on a section, you have it redlined, and they, they bring it up to a certain level based on, uh, based on the survey feedback from the visioning. It's updated and then it's presented to us ahead of time. So we get a redlined version, we can review it ahead of time.
I, I agree with that. What you won't get is what Dave was talking about, about the public process. Because there's no way they can have these working group meetings. Likely they're gonna meet in someone's living room, uh, on a Tuesday night. I mean, that's when they'll get together, because that's what works for their sick schedules or, or whatever. They're not gonna meet, they're not gonna wait to come here and they're, oh, we already have two people scheduled. You gotta wait for two more weeks.
The public participation, what I would do is I would, I would utilize the, the local free paper and at least have a few meeting spots where if you're interested in working on, this is what we're doing, this is what it means. Come meet at the library on X date from six to seven to recruit individuals to work on it. But the public participation part of that, that hard direct work outside of this, the, cause it, where you're gonna get general public is your, your survey and your visioning session. Cause even the way the open space and recreation meeting at this point, it's the, it's the public.
Yeah.
The public meeting with the open space and recreation.
That's your, your first townwide vision.
And then they can visit other, you know, experts in the area. So like.
No, the first townwide visioning is February.
Like the work session, the, um, that's what I was thinking, February, yeah, because after the survey, I was thinking, do the survey first. Then have the townwide vision session.
It's a lot of. Is the survey, uh, I don't know. Survey like for everything? Is that like, why are we doing a survey?
And that's one way of.
Soliciting.
Getting information from.
I think it's a good idea. For all, for everything, like, what do you, just like all topics?
I think waiting, waiting till February is too late.
I think so too. Cause you'd almost make a case for it to be a short survey now of what issues do you think need to be addressed.
Well, I think first to start, we need to give some time to be, like I said, update the draft. Otherwise, people are, if you put out a survey now, people are wondering where the final report is in two months. So there needs to be a little bit of time to get started. But I'm thinking, like, if someone's working on the land use element, they'll work on, they'll also contact, like, they'll be responsible for talking to land, the land trust or historic commission and getting some of that information on their own.
So at today's point, public participation is the survey, visioning session, and then there's a lot of behind this, the, that, what are we calling it? The group that's working, the working groups.
Yeah, the working groups.
Work on it, update it, have it redlined. It comes to us in an open meeting session at the planning board. But that's not a working session. I mean, you can't work.
Right, well, they'll be, I think they'll be.
It's feedbacked. We've reviewed it ahead of time. It's been posted, uh, on the website ahead of time. So, so the public that wants to come in to that planning board meeting, they'll be able to review it ahead of time.
So they, so I would imagine it'd be something like, um, the person, the steering committee people come in, they've already given us the material.
We have it ahead of time.
The document ahead of time, we've read it. They come in here, do a ten minute overview of, uh, what major issues have been raised. And at the end of that, they say, and so we're continuing this process, uh, next week at such and such a time. If there's anyone else in the community that wants to be involved, you can come talk to us there.
Or have feedback, cause they've had time to look at it.
Yeah, they're before the planning board. Comment at the meeting very.
So there's a feedback.
That's what I'm thinking. And I'm, I'm thinking we could even, you know, develop each way of.
I don't wanna have our meetings to have like three hour additional long working sessions.
Yeah, I don't.
It's not a work, it's not a work.
It's a, it's a report back.
It's a report back.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think we can have a productive working group meeting here.
Cause then people have to sit there for hours and hours.
Yeah, they wait for all our applications to be heard first.
They give us the document, the draft document ahead of time, we review it, they come in, they make the presentation, and then it's, they can continue the discussions outside of this.
So what we have to do is help, you know, when, uh, one of you mentioned, meet at the library on such and such a day. That, they're gonna need the help of staff to help coordinate. And we have nine groups looking to meet. There, we only have a few rooms in town that can do that. So they're gonna need help with staff to, when can we get this room? So we can now meet. So just another logistic thing that we're gonna have to help facilitate so that they can meet. So that if they have fifteen people, they don't have to think about all of them in their living room. That they have a public room to go to, a town, town room.
But is it to say they couldn't do, you say the high school cafeteria, they couldn't all go on a Tuesday, sit in their individual tables and all work on their individual problems?
Well, if, I don't know if that congregating in one room constitutes, I mean, I don't know. And it has to be advertised as a public meeting at that point, if they happen to all agree to meet in one night.
But does it? If they're not together.
I don't know. I don't know if separating out by table makes a distinction.
But if they're not working on the same thing, I don't know.
I, I don't know that either. I really don't think you're gonna get everyone available to work on the same night, in the same place.
Right, but if we can make the space available for them on a consistent basis, you know what I mean? Like the high school cafeteria, two, three days a week, just give them the option of it being there to use the space. Just, you know, just so we could really help get this along.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking they would need certain times that they would need to meet as a full community, you know, in the beginning, after the vision session, you know, as they're coming to.
The steering committee itself? Yeah. Or, I'm talking about the actual working groups.
I think, I, my gut tells me if they're meeting, if the first steering committee meeting where the eighteen of them will ever get together in mid-November, excuse me. I know it's the holidays, but it seems like there should be a visioning session soon after that. I mean, it's right after town meeting in November, assuming we're having one.
But there's no product really at that point to, to roll up.
No, that's what, to do what?
To just put out there, products, saying, this is what we've been talking about, this is what we're thinking, and it's basically, now what do you guys think? You know, as a public, what do you think?
Yeah, I think there's a little bit of time when I was thinking about this.
The visioning session for the open space and recreation was a lot easier, cause they were just looking at high level topics, the, um, the mission and objectives.
Well, eh, right, so is the town visioning session, townwide visioning, is that the kickoff to start thinking about these things? Or soliciting?
No, well, the, I was thinking the steering committee would meet in early November, early to mid-November as their kickoff.
But that's as a group of eighteen. When do they break off and start?
Oh, they can start right away.
Yeah, hopefully the next night.
Yes, we want them to start right.
I guess that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking as being called the visioning center, maybe not a session. Maybe it's just a, a different, a, a, a group visioning session, not, I don't know.
Yeah, I think a vision session's important.
I mean, a visioning session for this type of a document.
Yeah.
Is to get into the details.
It could be one long.
It should be, it should be one vision. Usually there's at least, there's one vision session.
Do it on a Saturday?
It could be done on a Saturday, whenever you think.
I mean, it's gonna take a while. It's started seven o'clock.
Yeah, whenever you think.
If we get bogged down in details in Benicia.
I think we, they did that a few times, they did it Saturday morning meetings.
Yeah, it's exciting. But probably one, cause you want it to be engaging and, and fun and getting people there and having them all come at one time to really talk about and listen to each other and kinda work together and debate issues and.
So, so if, if, just to, again, so I understand how this plays out. Mid-November, the eighteen meet. They break off into twos. The two start talking about their thing and they, they, they grab public, you know, uh, public feedback from people they can, they can, who are interested. And they work until Novem- uh, till February. And then in February, they finally let it be known to everyone else what they've been working on. They, and they say, no, 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 you're all wrong. That's wrong. That's not what we want. So all those three months have been shot to hell, basically.
No, no, no. Well, they'll be working on, in that time, they'll be working on the, like, first I'd want them to work on questions for the survey. So we'd have the survey open during that time to, like, December through Jan-, December and January have the survey. So they would be compiling that information for the, right, to have it ready for the vision session to be presented of, this is what we found in the survey. Um, and then they'll, um, I mean, they're supposed to be writing.
We don't wanna create a situation where they do all this work and then have to back it up three months, because the surveys didn't come in like they felt they should have, could have.
But we can't anticipate the survey responses.
No, 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 what I mean is the, uh, you're right. Our connectivity to that working group.
Yeah, but we could be wrong too. We could be on point with the working group, but all of us are wrong compared to what the survey results are gonna say. So all that time has gone on. You've done talking and working.
The survey is, is.
The survey is, is an element, it's not.
But it still has to go out soon enough.
But if we ignore it, how's that gonna be received?
As soon as possible, to get back as soon as possible. Because that's gonna basically guide everybody.
That's your biggest opportunity, that and this visioning session in February that's planned are your two biggest ways to get public input.
I just think like the surveys, there've been so many of these surveys. And if you wanna do a good survey, you should hire somebody to come and do a small controlled study.
You don't have a budget.
Kind of things where people send out emails and say, everybody wants X, please go fill out the survey five times.
Mike just said, we don't have money to do that.
Is it too late to apply for grants?
To get the money out of it, to get this going shortly.
It seems like that process is longer than we have.
There's no specific.
The working groups could do their own surveys too. And that's like, they could, they could put out their own simple survey together.
We'd have to approve that, I mean. They can't just ask, do you want gold on the trees? You have to, has to be.
Again, it's, it's all, because none of these are, it's not like a, it's not, um, it's just as valid as anything we do to have, if a working group on transportation wants to do a survey and they get like a couple hundred responses of people, then it tells you what a couple hundred people thought out of 15,000 residents.
And if 15,000, if you get 15,000 responses, and you got 15,000 different things being said, you're no closer to resolution.
So it's a, it's a, I think, I would, I hope these groups can just figure out some, what works for them. And kind of things that, anyway. I think that we have a good structure, so we should keep on with this. So what do we need to, what do we need to do to get this to, the thing we need to have is to kick off the appointment process or to.
Well, I think tonight what we have to do is we have to come up with a common sense number of how many people are gonna be on the steering committee. I think with that number, she can create the hierarchy of it all and bring it, we can go to the board of selectmen and say, this is what we need at your next meeting.
Does this steering committee need a chairman?
I don't know if it's necessary, I don't know if you need to set a specific number. You could just make the recommended range and see what comes in.
They're gonna appoint a certain amount of people.
No, we need to tell them how many positions we wanna fill, I think. This is how we think this works best, how do you see that?
Because they might come back to us and say, here's 15, and say, oh, sorry, we need 18.
I think it depends.
I think it depends on what you get.
So depending upon these nine or 10 or 11 sections.
Well, we don't have that number yet. We know we have nine, we don't know if we have 11.
I like having two appointees basically to run the working group. Whether it's just the two alone, or they bring in two, three, four, five other people. But two, you know, play off each other to bring back the final report on the drop dead day. You know, expedite any problems we might have with sickness, vacations, whatever, in getting the work done.
But they could, they could do dual duty. If we only get 14.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Four people could do two.
Exactly.
I think you need just random, I think you need at least 12 people, there's no way it could be less fewer than 12. And whether, if you get 18, that's probably good, if you don't want 40, so.
I'm fine with that.
So, so we're saying cap it at two per section, two per element?
But some of the elements.
Whatever we come up with, right now we're at 18.
But some of them are gonna be grouped. Like transportation is only a.
Okay, well, who's gonna make the decision on what gets grouped?
Yeah, you can't, you can't do that, because what if?
Abby can do that.
No, logistically, that doesn't work out.
No, but I mean, outside of this meeting, somebody needs to group some of these, because some of them are more straightforward than others. Less complicated.
We have, we as a board have to make that decision.
Right, or you could leave it to the selectmen.
Well, and I think the people who are volunteering to give all their time are gonna pick things out of this. And the problem's gonna be that somebody, they're not gonna pick one of them, right?
One or two are not gonna be picked at all, and now we're gonna have to force somebody to do that.
Well, I don't think it could be.
We're not gonna be able to force anybody.
You can indicate your interest, but you might not be on economic development.
Oh, yeah, we can number one through eight, you know, favorite to least favorite. But again, that's a time.
I know, well, then that's why I would leave it to the selectmen to, to do this.
You get, you get four people that are interested in economic development, and you can say, well, you know, okay, maybe a couple of you, could you please take land use, you know, or could you, maybe the town centers, that's, that, maybe those two, maybe town centers.
So let the gauge of interest dictate what's gonna get grouped and not grouped?
I mean, it's all dependent on people wanting to do it. You're not gonna be able to just to say, somebody says, I wanna do economic development, you say, oh, sorry, you're gonna do, you know, natural.
Right, well, you'll lose that person right there with that.
I go back to what Chris said earlier, and not to go right around this, the, the skill set.
Well, that's why I would leave it to the selectmen. They have, they've done this. When did the last time they did this, two or three years ago?
Right, so I think they would.
But it wasn't, it's because things didn't happen and a myriad of, of other reasons. Why they didn't produce anything, but they still selected people to do, to write this.
Well, they selected people and then it's, we got a product that.
Well, and you know.
But they weren't given the guidance that we're trying to come up with, the framework that we're trying to come up with now.
A lot of those people would be like, thank you for bringing this back, let's get it done now.
Yeah, and some will say, forget it. Stunk then, I don't want any part of that now. And that's fine, everyone's entitled to say no, it's, it's a volunteer.
So maybe, I mean, we need, what we need is we need to fill, we need eight, we need two people for each of these subject areas.
I would think so.
Yes.
That would be my.
Ideally.
Ideally, that would be most.
Or we have 18 spots to fill. If one person wants to do two.
Yeah, more power to them.
Okay, so let's call it, well, cap it at 18, we can do a minimum.
I would say two per element, subject to possible additions if we wanna add more elements. Right now, we're at nine.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, 18, so you recommended 18 steering committee members?
Yeah.
You may wanna add that rationale, two people per element.
Yeah, that's right.
Two per element, planned element, okay.
And we might come up a little short, and then we start combining a few, depending on the gauge of interest from the people who are involved.
Works for me.
I don't, I don't think it'll be hard to find steering committee members to do my government civic engagement thing, so. I don't wanna throw that in there. I don't think that'll be the one that's hard to fill.
Let's just be like a.
I just don't, I just don't understand what they're gonna come up with.
Well, one is that people don't even know how to get involved. There's nothing on.
The people who wanna get involved, figure out a way to get them.
Well, so there's, I hear kinds of questions that would come up in these things.
Who do I call?
Should we continue to have open town meeting? Should we have three selectmen or five? Should we have a precinct based election of selectmen? Should we use, should we use social media all over the place? Why isn't the town administrator blogging about everything that's going on? Why don't we have a Facebook page for everything in town? Should we have more, a human rights committee? Maybe there should be a human rights committee in town, or there is, but it's not active. Or what, maybe we should review all the committees that have been created over the past and just stand and reform them in a different way, give people more opportunity to participate. There could be so many like ideas.
I know, there can be so many ideas, but we have to narrow it down.
All of these things that we're talking about, the eight element, nine elements, they're under this board's purview. Those things you're talking about are not things the planning board deals with. So where, in this document, who do we thrust that responsibility to? To, to come up with all those answers of those reviewing, you know, how do we do this? That's what I'm saying, I'm, I'm agreeing with Mike. I don't see how this fits into this document. Although I get the knee jerk reaction, this is the time to bring it up. I'm not sure it fits under what we're trying to do as a planning board going forward with our future. I, I think those might be steps the town staff needs to take to, to make us a better informed town. I don't disagree that those questions need to be answered.
Like the bylaw review committee that was like whatever years ago. Because other things that have happened, like electronic voting, you know, these are all sorts of, maybe, maybe this is true. It's not in the scope of the planning board, maybe it's a different thing. So maybe that's a, a case for having a, people that are really concerned about those issues to have a separate thing. That's like the, the way that the charter, charter review is what I meant, not by law review. But there's like that kind of, those kinds of questions do, are more governance questions than planning questions, I guess. It's just that they are part of the fabric of all the things.
I, I agree.
Absolutely.
I agree, they are, I just don't know how it fits in this document.
Trying to write up in very specific documents. And, you know, we gotta draw the line of where we're gonna stop.
Why is resilience and sustainability? It's whatever we want, it's whatever, this is like.
Well, it's whatever we want, but again, we have a timeframe, we can only get so much accomplished in that timeframe.
Yeah, and climate, yeah.
Well, I assume resilience means.
We need, we need a, we need marching orders on that, what is?
Sustainability.
Responding to crisis.
Yeah, and team management too.
You, there, I don't know, I'm just saying that the, yeah, we need to, so we could say we need two people for each thing. And so I guess we could leave it open, because isn't it possible that people will come up and say, well, why aren't you considering health as an issue?
Yeah.
Maybe there's a case to be made, maybe that's, maybe, maybe actually, yeah, maybe the selectmen should, if there's additional elements that should be a part of the plan, since they're really more for the whole town, it's really in their court. So maybe someone who's, who wants there to be a health component to this should go to the selectmen and say, I think the comprehensive plan needs a health component, just making that up as an example. That also takes it off. Echoing your earlier point, it kind of removes the, it makes it less political for us. Like, oh, why did the planning board decide that they were gonna do?
Yeah, it was, it was not gonna be a health section, right.
So I was just, first time I did this with this set of eyes, everything that's in here, these eight, not the nine, the eight, has to do with how we use our space and our buildings. So when we talk about, so they're, they're all related one way or another with this board. And that's, that's what we're in charge of, is, is how our town uses our buildings and our spaces and things like that. But I don't know how we tie in resilience and sustainability into that. Might be easy, I don't know, that's why I was just asking Abby, what does that mean? Solar and recycle? I, I don't know. And if it does, maybe there is a way we can do that and incorporate that in here. And I want to, but I just wanna be clear as to what we're, what we're gonna write for that ninth element. We have, we already have a document showing these eight. So we have a blueprint already for the eight. We don't have one for the nine, we can probably find another town that did it.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we do it then? We know we need to do the eight. And so that's sort of, and getting back to like, we need a steering committee with at least two people.
Two, two people per element, that's how I would put it.
And we are open to including additional elements if, if, if people agree that that should be added. But you gotta find the people for it too.
You're gonna find the people for it, and you're gonna have a consensus of what and why it needs to be in this document as opposed to any other study.
Right, like there's, there's differences, things we write into our bylaws versus the way staff does the job. There, there's procedures and there's bylaws. And we can change procedures all we want. And, well, we can't change bylaws all we want. So I forget, we, we did something with 55 and older community senior residential housing. We changed the procedure to help facilitate better projects coming through, but we didn't change the bylaw. And I forget exactly where I was going with that, but we don't have to.
Well, the bylaw would have to be changed at town meeting as opposed to.
Right, 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 no, that was, it was more of an analogy where I was going with that. And, and this resilience and sustainability, I, I guess we need to see how it relates to these top eight. Because the top eight do have something to do with space, buildings, I mean, even economic development is attracting businesses, which is buildings. So I just wanna make clears, what, we're not just throwing stuff in and we're moving away. There's a reason the state put these eight in as the minimum, because they do relate to the, the business of the planning board. And we're not, I don't think tasked with branching out to other venues or other, not venues, other ideas of thought to include in this document that don't relate to these, to these eight. But again, I, I haven't reviewed other towns' comprehensive plans. So there might be some really great ideas out there that, and how they, maybe they did something like the governance thing. I don't know how you do it, but maybe they did.
Yeah, I know the eight, the top eight are required in, in state law. And then other communities have added these other elements like climate action and, or climate change. Climate action and health are ones that a lot of communities have been adding. So I'm sure there's many more that they can, they can add. But I know those are two big ones that have been added a lot in the last several years. But that's something that can, you know.
It can grow.
Can grow as a process and while you have the steering committee.
But I think Mike said it, that's the first thing we need to do is give the selectmen our idea as to how we are moving forward and how this thing should be organized. And I think it starts with that number, two, two per element.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think we have a consensus.
Okay, did you wanna pick like a element for you to be liaison to now? Or, I don't know if it has to be right now.
I'm aware of it.
Can we?
Yeah, I'd say we wait till we figure out.
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, you're gonna say at this time, okay.
We don't have anyone to put on that yet, so.
Okay.
I just, I think they're, they're all gonna be as, as important as the next.
Well, they're all important, they just might not be as, as popular.
Well, it's not even about point, it's, your job is to make sure they deliver a product on time.
Yep.
You know, so it really doesn't matter which topic you're on.
Yeah, there's actually some advantage to not getting, not being on the most interesting topic, because then.
Right, because then all of a sudden you become, you become part of it all instead of being, you know, overseeing it, guiding it.
Right, if they, if you go to the, you've got these two people appointed for open space or whatever, and you go in there and you're like.
I've got all the ideas for open space.
You got Tuesday nights out at the restaurant to shoot.
Go write the thing, we'll, we'll see you in a couple months.
All right, was there anything else that we missed or we got off topic?
Nope, I think that was all.
I think we're good on that, so the other, moving on to.
Oh, well, we did, I did ask the question, just, do, if the selectmen come back and say, you need a chairman for the steering committee, we think you need a chairman, what's our response to that? Do you see one fitting, could we make room for it to fit in? Because right now, we haven't, we haven't suggested that.
But does it have to be from the planning board?
No, not from the chair, no, you'd select someone to oversee the steering committee as a steering committee chairman.
Open space and recreation, we nominated somebody at the meeting. We had a kickoff meeting.
So is one of the steering committee members would become a chairman so they served dual duty?
Yeah, that's what I do, I think we need their pick.
They would, okay, I'm, because right now, we didn't, I, I just wanna make the, if we go back and forth, it's gonna take weeks to get a simple question answered.
What I think they need, I mean, even if the chair is not, I mean, they just need somebody, they will need someone to run the meeting. Someone has to be.
Well, of those 18 appointed or however many we go forward, they can decide.
So they can have a, a chair who just, you know, calls the meeting to order and runs it? Or they can have a chair who really gets into.
Calls what meeting to order?
The steering committee.
When they meet as a whole, when they meet as a whole, it's here, right?
It'll probably.
No, well, well, it could be anywhere, but it won't be for the board.
They might meet on their own like a couple times, like in the beginning. I think in the past, I did check, I think in the past, we did have a chair of the, the steering committee when we did the last update or the, the current plan.
Yeah, I have a feeling the selectmen.
I mean, it may not be totally necessary, but they'll probably want, yeah, someone to just say, all right, we're starting the meeting now. Does the next step kinda run?
Yeah, there's gotta be, someone has to call me to order.
Someone has to sit at the end of the table.
Otherwise, everyone's standing wrong, I think we should do.
Right, right.
So, and again, it can be, if the person wants to.
So you might have to include that.
If they don't, then.
We might wanna include that, you know, the selectmen to identify one of these 18 to be active as chairman.
I think, I think it could just be a democratic vote of, from the 18 selected, who they want.
That doesn't always get you the best chairman.
No, it does not.
But every other.
Neither does a placement either.
I think, I mean.
I, I think a democratic vote of the board itself is, is, for me anyway, is sufficient to get you a chair.
Yeah, I think.
But if, you know.
They feel the need to appoint somebody, they can, but I mean, that's not usually how, that kinda takes away the, it's like you're appointed all these people and then you tell them someone's gonna be their manager.
Well, someone has, somebody has to, like you say, run the meeting, we elected you, right?
They'll, they'll elect their own chair, or, or the selectmen can appoint.
Leave it at the selectmen's discretion, to how they want.
That's right.
The chairman is chosen.
No, I mean, we haven't even talked to them at all about really this, or I don't know if you've talked to.
To who?
To the selectmen about this whole process that we're doing.
Well, that's what we're doing.
Not with this new one, but, I mean, usually, they wouldn't appoint a chairperson, usually, they'll appoint people to a committee, and then when the committee meets, usually, they start.
We are asking them to do this, you know, it's not like we're just saying, oh, it's gonna happen, so you gotta wait to make these appointments. No, we're asking the selectmen to help us by appointing eighteen people to the steering committee, and we're giving, here's what we want the committee to do, so it's, you know, it's, it's-
I mean, they've done by October. In order for this timeline to work.
Right.
It's gotta be done by October.
And we gotta stay tight to the timeline.
All right, speaking of, speaking of timelines, we are, are we done with the item number three on the agenda now?
Yes.
Consensus, we have a plan, to plan, um, item number four is other business, um, ZBA applications.
So there were two?
Oh, yes, there are two new applications for the July meeting. One was, um, they're putting on a second story on their house, and there was a special permit for, um, expansion of, um, non-conforming setback. Um, so that was consistent with the, um, changes you approved two years ago with those zoning changes. You can put on the second story, you're going up vertically with, but with the same footprint, that's a special permit. They had submitted an application for a variance, um, and so I had drafted some comments, if you had a chance to review, recommended they drop that height a little bit to me, because it was only about a foot, and to meet the, um, meet the height requirement that, and then withdraw the variance request. And I believe they're working on doing that. The applicant had contacted, um, the zoning agent about working on revised plans to withdraw that variance application. So essentially, that was my comment, that if, if they don't need the variance, if they can design the second story to meet that, um, I think, twenty-five feet, foot limit, then that's a recommendation. And they, and I believe they're working on that. So that was my comment. Then the second one was a, um, accessory apartment. It wasn't clear, um, exactly, I, I believe, they submitted a plot plan, it was a couple years old, for a proposed addition. I think the addition's already built, and they want to, within that, have an accessory apartment. So my comments were for that, to the zoning board to verify the size requirements, and that it meets all the design requirements. I, it looked like just, the general size looked about six hundred square feet, or nine hundred square feet was the maximum, but that was, I couldn't tell exactly what was, from the plans they submitted, uh, that was kind of the general addition footprint, not necessarily the apartment itself. If anyone has any other comments that I would send the zoning board tomorrow?
Yeah, I was fine with what you had provided.
We covered everything, I think.
Okay, I'll send that tomorrow.
All right, if there's no, we, I think we can just informally, we don't need to, just kinda giving advice to-
About what? The ZBA?
That we can-
Yeah, I, generally, I'll get their applications, they'll, they'll be sent to me, um, so I usually draft, draft comments. If I get them in time for your meeting, I'll put them in your packet, and for you to let me know if you have any other further comments for me to add to my memo.
All right. Do we, you don't need to take any, okay. Next, um, other business items? Is there anything else, um, besides the minutes that we need to, any updates that we need to discuss, or?
Not-
Questions about the materials that were out there? Has, have, have people reviewed the meeting minutes?
Yes.
Is someone prepared to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, minutes from the June twelfth-
June twelfth meeting, two thousand and eighteen.
My second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved? Any new business, anything else?
Lot of one thing, was the, um, associate membership. You have two associate membership, um, positions that are open.
You want to make a recommendation?
No, not yet, but, um, you have two vacant posi, or one just expired, and then a second one, um, position is vacant, since Todd Sullivan, um, didn't get reappointed, or didn't wanna continue last year. So Steve Raski is interested in being reappointed, and Steve Olunoff is interested in becoming an associate member. The only way associate members can be appointed is through a joint meeting with the planning board and board of selectmen. So they had suggested, or they gave me their next two meeting dates, if you're able to attend. Associate members are, are essentially a backup planning board member if, if something happened to one of you five. You're the five full voting members, but if you couldn't serve on an application, if you had, um, I guess, a conflict of interest, or vacancy, like, for example, if, if you moved out of town or something, um, yeah, if you resigned early or something, or, I guess that's it. I guess if something happened. Yes.
Definitely a member.
Something, something unexpected that you can't act on your application. In the past, we haven't used them too much, only a couple times. Since planning board members, you're able to miss one hearing for an application, so if it's something that's going on for multiple, um, you could miss one hearing, watch the tape, and sign the affidavit that you've watched it and can continue. But if, I think we used Steve Raski before, when we had, um, a previous member, found out he couldn't attend, and it was, there was a earth material movement application that was on, that does need four votes, and they're usually done in one night, so we were able to call in the, um, associate member for that application. And then the only other time was when we had a subdivision submitted, um, the applicant really wanted to submit in the springtime, but we knew it was gonna continue past two members' terms, so we had called in the associates at that time.
And so it's, um, it's, at the, the chair appoints a person for a particular application.
Yes.
And it's never, you cannot have six. Like, we wouldn't, you can't appoint an associate member to be added to the five. It only comes up if there's a vacancy, or a gap, or a known situation where-
Yeah, and the chair is the one who decides which of the associates is chosen.
Or when the associate is needed.
When it's needed, right.
But for this approval of the selectmen, do we have to attend the meeting, or can't we just vote to give a-
Yes, it's a joint meeting.
So-
It has to be a joint post.
Steve Raski and Todd Sullivan first were voting, because they were the first two to hold this position. The planning board and the selectmen met at the library-
Library, yeah.
And interviewed all the people interested. There were four people interested for these two positions, I think. And the planning board and selectmen voted, and Mr. Raski and Mr. Sullivan were the two top vote getters. So that's how it played out. But I don't remember doing this to reappoint Steve Raski, because his term has since expired, but he's been reappointed once, at least, right?
No, it was a three-year term, so it just expired until, it just expired, um-
So to be reappointed, he, we need to have the same process of, of voting?
Yes, I think so, yeah.
That does raise an interesting thing I hadn't thought of, was, um, so what if, is it just that we would appoint people, or is there, is it open, like, I guess, with that?
It, it was open three years ago. I don't know, and I, I don't know if it was advertised, or to what extent it was advertised. I don't know, I don't know how that process went, it was town staff took care of that, uh-
I think initially, since it was new, we had recently added this to the charter of this section, and I think we did interview or post something, saying we were looking for associate members. And so we did, I think, had four applicant, applicants at that time.
I just wanna be sensitive to the, um, you know, the issue of former members. I mean, they may be the most qualified, the best people in the world to be associate members on the board, but, um, I just wanna be conscious of the fact that, you know, people be like, what the heck, you know, what are you doing, like, appointing people, extra people, it's, um-
Well, again, it's not being appointed, it's voted in.
It's voted in, it's not extra people.
By two different boards. And just having sat on the board, when you had associates sit in, having people who have done this, know how to sit here, listen, and then render, uh, a judgment, i- it's very important, rather than sit here and trying to get your bearings, and have, never having sat in this chair before, and then vote on it. You need to know how this process works to be helpful and effective, in this situation.
Because the alternative is that you're stuck completely, like, if you need four votes for a special-
If you don't have it, you're, you're dead in the water, until you get someone else, either by a special appointment, by the selectmen to fill the spot, or a special election.
Jimmy, and I have, so for this particular appointment, um, it would go through the same interview process? Because I don't know Steve Raski, um, to even make a vote on, on him, and then-
Right, so we would call them, I know I had just reached out to them, and they had suggested their next meetings are July twenty-third and, um, August- August thirteenth. So what we did last time was they came-
I couldn't recommend him, because I don't know anything about him. And then with all due respect for Steve Olunoff, he just lost an election, so to have him appointed to the planning board seems almost undemocratic, in a way, where he's-
He's not appointed to the planning board.
He's not, he's not on the planning board.
He's an associate member.
No, but even to, even to have him as an associate member looks, it seems strange to me.
No, I, that's why we were saying, we don't know what, these are the two names who are so far-
Yeah, yeah.
In front of us. We have two positions.
Yep.
These are the only two names so far.
But it was, it hasn't been advertised.
Right, and that's what we were saying, if it gets advertised by however the selectmen do this, um, then we go through, I don't know if it was an interview, I guess it was, someone, they, they were, they got up there, they listed their qualifications to the joint board, or two boards, and then we voted. I don't remember if it was a secret vote, or-
I think it was a little summer, I think it was a little summary of your background, we had everyone say a few words, and then, and then I think both the board of selectmen and planning board is voted right there.
Yeah, they decided that night. And I know the other people went out of the room, the other candidates left the room.
The process seems, like, the interview process seems fine. I would advertise it for Steve to not get elected back to the planning board, to have him as an associate member, would seem strange to me as a resident of the town. Even though he has a track record on the, on the planning board, um, but he did lose an election, um, and then Steve, I don't know who Steve is.
But he, he lost an election to sit on this board permanently. He didn't lose an election to be an associate member.
Yeah, but-
So to discount him wholly, just because of that fact, that's not, that's equally unfair.
It's not, it's, it's more of the, you know, the perception of things, it'd be like, well, they just put that guy back on. And even though he is, like, probably the most qualified person in town to be on this board-
And that's why we would put him on as an associate member, not at any other capacity.
And if it's advertised, and we choose someone else, that's fine. If there's five people here, and he's not one of the ones chosen, that's fine. But I think to, to push away his qualifications simply because he didn't win an election in April, the whole point of this board is to come up with the right thing. And if he is one of the most qualified people, and we choose to select him, I don't think that's bad, if you come up with the right thing. Optics aside, our goal is to come up with the right decisions for these hearings.
I know, but the vis, it's, the optics seem bad to me, that to, to have somebody as an associate member who didn't get elected onto the board, seems a bit undemocratic, it really does, to me.
It's two different positions, associate member and full-time member, two different-
But if somebody left the town, now they're automatically on the planning board.
No, they're not.
That's what Abby just said.
No, no, it's the discretion of the chairman to select who, and if someone leaves, they can hold a special election. It's really, if we have no hearings, they have nothing to do, because there's nothing-
It looks, it looks odd to me. It looks really odd to me.
I don't think it looks really odd at all. Someone who has done this job would like to continue to, he, he ran, he just didn't win. He's qualified to do it.
What would be more odd is someone who's never done this job before, to be thrust into a hearing, and never done this before, and not even know what to expect of it.
But even if it plays out that way, that's fine. I just don't want to, just like I don't want him to be a shoe-in, because he's qualified, I don't wanna discount him, because he lost an election.
I, it just seemed, I know, I'm, I'm just giving, I'm just giving my opinion.
I just wanna do the right thing for the town, and if that means having the most qualified person here, then so be it. If it means he's not, because the process of selection means he didn't get selected, then that's fine, too.
Yeah, so if, I just think it looks-
He's entitled to be considered.
And, and that's what, that's what I'm saying, and I'm saying, in consideration, it, it seems, it seems strange to me.
Okay. So we need to find out what advertising-
So I could see about advertising, the position, and then-
But I don't know how they can-
Yeah, I think July would be too soon, so probably-
Thirteen days from now, there's no way you can properly advertise it.
I don't think everyone was available for August meeting, right?
Um, August thirteenth.
So, so maybe we advertise, and then find another date, um, where you'd have a joint meeting, like, it might be like September. Probably September, I guess.
It's not urgent.
Because the selectmen, yeah, we don't have any applications that we know of coming, so-
How does the, um, now, there have been situations, like, I think Trevor was originally appointed, right?
To what?
To the planning board, so is it different for-
He was appointed, he ran.
Someone was, weren't you?
I, I ran a special election. Before we had associate members, Carol Chavitz, Chavitz, I can't remember her name.
Yeah.
She decided to withdraw from the board after one year of her three-year term. So I ran a special election, and that, so they decided to do a special election, instead of having associate member, because they didn't have associate member.
What about, um, but I know, I remember there was an appointment of, um, Jack Wigan was appointed by the selectmen.
Maybe to fill out another term, yeah, possibly.
After he'd been on the board for, like, thirty years, but-
Well, they needed, yeah, that's right, they didn't, he retired off the board, I'd be willing to say.
Someone, someone left?
Someone else left, and they brought him back, but they-
Appointed him to fill-
Special appointment, you know?
Just to fulfill the remaining of that term.
So that's, that's a different, um, process.
But this whole thing-
I think that's a different position.
That, that takes that away.
Right.
They're not doing that anymore, the selectmen aren't appointing people to fill out, because the planning board now has the associate member position.
Two associate members, that the chairman decides who would step in.
And if it's, if it's, if one of us was elected, and we moved a month later, and we had three years, probably gonna have a special election.
Yeah, there'd have to be, I mean, I guess-
They're not gonna use associate members for the next three years.
They might sit at one or two meetings, but they're gonna schedule a special election.
But they have to wait.
Because otherwise, the chair would have to constantly appoint the person to sit on-
Right, for every hearing.
That would look very odd, if you pick, oh, we don't even have to have an election, we got somebody waiting in the wings, like, so-
But that helps with applicant, applicants go through this process. If so, if one of us takes a sick leave, and we're laid up in a hospital for six weeks, but we need a four-person, you know, yes vote.
Right, things are great.
Well, I mean, if an applicant loses, they're gonna challenge the, you know, the neighborhood-
The town is up for a lawsuit.
Who just didn't even know what the, what was going on, it's gonna be his contention, that the person filling in didn't have any idea what they were doing, and that's why he lost.
I think we're all in favor of the process.
Yeah, I, I, unfortunately, I don't think-
Advertise, yeah.
It's gonna work.
We'll advertise, and then it'll probably be sometime in September, I guess.
All right, are there any other, oh, so the, um, the August meeting, we also, so we have Todd, Todd Corchum would be here to talk about the Gay Street sidewalks. And also, we've asked Paul Sicard to come to that meeting, so to talk about the speed limit, his concerns about the default speed limit idea, the twenty-five mile an hour town line speed limit.
Or he was getting back to me on the date, he was checking on August, he said he was, I think, couldn't make it tonight, but he was checking on August or September dates, so I'll check in with him.
Is that an urgent thing? Do we have something pressed for it?
We brought, we brought that up, just-
Yeah, no, I remember talking about it, I just couldn't remember if there was, what was lighting that fire.
Nothing that I remember. I think, I mean, there was a recommendation from the Ped Bike Committee for the, to set a speed limit on, um-
University, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, people have been coming up with this thing, is that, I mean, it could come up as a petition article or something, a thing, it could, um, it could be something that comes up at town meeting, and so it might be good to hear what the concerns are on it, and if we have a position to be out in front of, uh, something, so, let's see. The other thing, um, what, so the trees are gonna be replaced at, um, the dead trees that the new development is planted?
Yeah, they didn't take-
Yeah, so it looks like two of them may have taken. It's just hard, because they're buried in there. So, what was, what was the agreement in the, in that special permit?
Um-
Was it, was it specific to the species?
Yes, but it said twenty-
It was a height thing.
Twenty feet height was important, so I told them- Twenty feet height was important, so I told them that he needs to submit a new plan showing replacement of trees, new trees that are twenty feet high.
So I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if those trees will work, because those are, those are nice buffer.
No, they say they're too shallow, the roots are too shallow, because it's sitting over the parking garage.
Yeah, I know.
And that was.
The two that took, maybe, maybe aren't right over, maybe they have a little deeper soil right there, too made, or they just randomly made it.
They randomly made it, or it could die next year.
Abercrombie's, to get to that height, they start tipping.
At twice.
So that's, so I just wanted to say, like, when they, when they, so you've already asked them, they're sending a plan, what they're recommending.
Yes, I know, he said his tree person did come out and said there was not enough room underground because of the parking garage for those roots to grow, so he recommended a different tree species.
Other than Abercrombie's?
No, I think he did recommend Abercrombie.
He did suggest green giant Abercrombie.
It might be a different species.
They can go.
I just don't want to put in new ones that start tipping.
The green giant are usually, those are the ones that we have had good luck with, the green giant ones.
Is that going to come back to us, I just want to make sure that.
I said it would, if he can supply a plan, it would be a minor modification, it'd be showing twenty feet high, modified landscaping, and then I said I would send it to you to comment on before I approve it, but I said it would have to be at least, I think, two per every tree that's there now, so I thought it'd be more like ten, ten of those.
Yeah, because the ones that are there.
For the five dead ones. They're not.
But two do look like, I'd hate for them to just take down the ones that might be stable enough to.
Yeah, I think he recommended five of the seven that were out there, removing those for September.
Is Karen involved at all? Is she?
Oh, I should check with her, yeah, she's good with, Karen is good with the, I'll check on the plan with her. So generally, we recommend planting in September.
Right.
After the.
Totally.
After the heat.
All right, are there, were there any other, any questions from any of Abby's notes, any questions about like the zoning amendment updates, or anything?
The two thousand seventeen, Attorney General, conditional approval, that was from last fall, if everyone saw those notes. It was from, if you remember, we canceled the meeting.